Everything is live.
Everything's live, okay. Good evening and welcome to the October 13th, 2020 Board of Trustees Work Session. May I have a motion to open this meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. It is anticipated that we will go into executive session and I believe we should do that first. We're not going to talk about court personnel tonight. But there's appointments to boards and commissions. It is anticipated the motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 105-1F, the New York State Public Officers Law, to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a member of the Flood Board, and I think we also have the Arts Council.
Yes.
Any other? No.
No.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
That includes advice of counsel?
Yeah, it always includes advice of counsel, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Bob is not here, isn't FYI, so if it's something for Bob, you might want to...
Are we expecting him?
Yeah, he should be coming. He just might be a few minutes late. I'm not sure. It could be as few as a couple minutes or it could be half an hour. He's on another call.
Okay.
Trustees' wintrum?
Yes.
That's us?
Yes.
Locas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Aye. I'll see your folks on executive session.
Okay.
Do you notice that? Why don't you do it?
Just to have a laugh or sing a song.
Video and sound is on. Okay, the whole gang here. Are you all right?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome back. We are back from executive session. We are now going to go back into our work session. There were no actions to report in executive session. June. Item one A, old business is Juneteenth celebration of Village of Maric. There has been no progress on this. We have not met with the group yet. When there is more information, since I volunteered to work with that group, I will relate it. Everyone has been kind of a little busy in the last few weeks. Item one B, traffic safety recommendations is on for regular meeting. B one is lowering the speed limit on Fenimore Road to 25 miles per hour. I think when we were lowering speed limits in the village, we thought that Fenimore Road in the Village of Maric belonged to the county. And we got an error and does not belong to the county. Apparently it is our purview. So we are going to lower that, you know, the proposals to lower that to 25 miles per hour. Somebody having discussion about that?
This is something that the Traffic Commission is strongly backing. We recently did a safety assessment, walking safety assessment on Mount Pleasant or Mount or Prospect. God, I get confused, but Fenimore, the intersection at Fenimore. And I think this will help considerably. I hope so. And for anyone who has spoken with Shannon Purdy or met with the Traffic Commission and heard her presentations on the difference it makes when you reduce the speed limit from 25 to 30 and the injuries that are caused in that five mile difference, it's pretty shocking. So it's a great thing to do.
Okay, everybody else fine with it? But I'm doing it for regular meeting. And the last is providing a handicap space on Center Avenue. This is pretty self-explanatory. It's a, I guess there, there is a handicapped person who lives on Center Avenue. I think this is in the industrial area.
It is.
And they are desirous of a space. Just to point out though, that if this handicap space is put down there, it isn't a private space. It is a space for any handicapped person, but obviously there, there, there's not a lot of people who live down there. It probably, you know, work out well for the person who requested it. I have no problem with that. Does anybody on board have any problem with that?
No, this will help. No.
Okay, so I imagine us going to go on a real meeting. Okay, so those are items for regular meeting. Grant writing services on for regular meeting. We talked about this. This is the outfit that is currently serving the Village of Maric and has got us some money in the past. Everybody's in favor of putting this on for regular meeting?
I have a couple of questions. I mean, is this, you know, we're spending a lot and I, and we're really trying to think about how we spend money. And I know that, you know, we've gotten, I think we would have gotten the EFC grant without their help. I mean, I think that's the New York State Water Quality Grant. So is this really, you know, is this really a good use of our, our funding? It seems like most of the grants are on hold anyway. And is this, is this something we should be, is this an expense we should be making?
Can I, can I add a question to that? So that we get it all at once? Could maybe it could be, would it be a good idea to just maybe do a six month? I, I remember when this came on board, this was before the board, the board members came in. They were very successful. And very, very, in a way, a new approach. And at NICOM, they, they got a lot of attention. So, so they were, they made, they made a lot of, you know, good progress at the beginning, but now, now it's, there's, you know, there's a lot of the same grants that everybody's going after. So my question is whether should we just maybe do it for six months or something as, as we calibrate them, calibrate what, what's really going on now? So anyway, those are the questions to add to the, what Nora was asking.
Jerry or Dan want to speak to this?
Other than assistance that they provided for the EFC grant, which they did a lot of work. And we didn't have to do a lot of that work. They were able to obtain over $200,000 for us. But it's whatever the board desires. If they want to go six months at a time, we don't have an issue with that. There are a lot of grants that are still on the table that they're still trying to go after for us. But it's whatever the board feels is appropriate as far as, as far as the $36,000 a year that, that it costs for this service.
Yeah, I, I think that for $36,000 a year, you know, exclusive of the water grant, they got us 200 grand. It's a good investment. And they have a lot of irons in the fire.
Yeah.
And I, I think, actually, I think it's money well spent. I think it's, you know, we have to look at every avenue of getting outside revenue for the Village of Maric. And what they also do is they free up village staff time to do other things. I, I know that before we had them, Mr. Sonoff was spending a lot of his time writing grants. And, you know, I would, I would propose that in the past months, when Mr. Sonoff was in charge of the building department, he would not have had time to write grants.
And it wasn't just me writing grants. It was several other members of the staff, especially when it came down to the
Point being is that it
My time.
The question, I think Tom, Tom is raising the question. Jerry is if we don't, if we did not hire them, who, who and staff would be able to do this?
So this $3,000 a month, in essence, Dan, gets us a staff person that works in another building for another company, watching over every single grant that we either are applying for or could go after. And it's hard to judge who would be responsible for doing that here and if they had time. But I would lean on Mr. Sonoff a lot more to be able to do that work. But then he would be responsible for going after identifying the grants, keeping track of the grants, understanding, you know, when they open, when they close, regating the letters of interest. There's a lot of work that we get out of this company for $3,000 a month.
So who's the project manager? Is it Dan? Who oversees them or Jared, you directly?
Dan. So Dan oversees.
Directs him. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we have five months.
And then I, I think I, at this point, then I can agree that it's a good, as long as, as you know, you're over on top of them, making sure that they are doing the best they can and tailoring things for us. I, I think, let's continue and let's, let's check or just, just keep us, keep us informed of opportunities and what's being created. So that, so it's really, we, we, we were able to score more of those.
If I can just add a comment, I made this comment last year. My, my concern, I, I think having a company that does this work for the village is a, a good thing. I don't know if there are other companies out there that do it. My concern has always been that if there's this one company that seems to work for all the municipalities, there just seems to me a professional conflict of interest that, that, how do we know they're putting us first? When they're also working for the competing municipalities. And so I just wonder if, you know, next year or if we can just keep in the back of our minds that while this is a good service to have and it gets us more than we pay, is there a better way to do it? Is there another company that does it who might have a more tailored approach to us?
Well, I mean, we might be able to use an individual grant writer. I don't think we necessarily need a company. We need somebody who can write grants. I mean, that's, you know, in the nonprofit world, you hire people to write grants. You hire them to write the grant. You don't pay them a percentage. You hire them to write the grant because there's a conflict about paying for a percentage. So maybe we want to look for somebody who's got skills in grant writing closer to home that would be more tailored. Because I think you're right, Kelly. I think you're absolutely right.
Better, go ahead.
Well, they're applying, they're applying for the same grants for a lot of different municipalities.
Right. I, I think though, we want more than someone who can write the grant proposals. I mean, we want someone who's looking for them and who just has their fingers all over in the grant world that they can find things that we might be eligible for.
Yeah, well, that's what grant writers do. I mean, they, 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 there are people who do it for municipalities or people who do it for arts organizations that, you know,
They do more than just writing, though. That, that's my concern. You just don't want someone who can just write the application. Yeah.
Okay, so this will be off for tonight.
Thank you.
I and I remediation areas seven, nine and 10. Who wants to speak to this? Jerry? I, people watching, I and I is inflow and infiltration. It's water getting into the sanitary sewer. Inflow is when somebody has a sun pump, let's say, or somebody connects their meters to the sanitary sewer that's inflow infiltration is when there are cracks in the pipes and the groundwater seeps into the sanitary sewer. In theory, the sanitary sewer should have nothing but what comes from the drains and the toiletry in your house and goes right down to the bottom of the hill here on the Maric Avenue Sewer Treatment Plant. So just use that as a setup. Jerry, please.
Mayor and, and board, based on a study from previous years where a company called Arcatis did the investigation work in areas eight, 11, 13, 14, and forgive me because I don't know exactly where the areas are without looking at the map and trying to find the eight and the 11. We have to continue for, to satisfy order and consent and also litigation that, that's currently, well, I want to categorize it, I guess. Based on litigation that we lost, correct?
Well, save the sound, if you remember the Save the Sound case was settled about four years ago with a commitment to complete all of the sewer remediation work by the end of 2019. That didn't happen. So we're in discussions now with Save the Sound about basically developing a new compliance schedule.
So this would be the second and last portion of the areas of the village that need to have the investigative work completed. This quote is just under 170,000. Our consulting engineer submitted a quote for, I don't, I'm not going to flip through the pages, somewhere around $153,000 to do all this work in this area. And it's extensive. We've read through it. We've had meetings about it. Ideally, the way this should work is the areas that I previously mentioned, eight, 11, 13 and 14. We have a bid document that's ready to go to be put out to bid for remediation and the work involved in those areas. The repair of those areas. And at the same time, we should be doing this investigative work so that once the company that we award the, the, the work to regarding the cast in place and the repairs of the laterals would move from eight, 11, 13, 14 into seven, nine and 10. We could continuously bring, we would just bring that company and complete all these areas to try to satisfy our timeline, which of course is extended and you know, something that we have to continue to work on before we get really jammed up with our latest extension that we were awarded. So that's where we are here.
Question, you, you mentioned you were going to get another proposal. Did you get it?
Yeah, we got another proposal. I'm not sure if I made it, if I was able to get it in here. Dan, do you call if you, if you were able to put it in here?
I might have put it on the next meeting. I'm not sure.
All right. So I do have another proposal, Victor. And it's just for slightly less, about about $14,000 less than what we have here from Arcatis.
Okay.
Ideally, Arcatis has worked with us in the past. They know our village. They're aware of these areas. But, you know, prices are prices. So and then as far as the bid document that's going to be released so that we can start to get bids back, we suspect that those bids will come back in the four to five million dollar range of which we have from the previous, previous discussion, 1,082,000 to be able to use for that work.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Jerry, you got, all right. I didn't mean to do you perfect. Go ahead.
So let me finish. No, first of, I, I just want to clarify because Bob mentioned the Save the Sound litigation. I, I actually, there's that component of it, but we, more recently, and I think actually more important, we have the order on consent with the DEC. It was approved about six months ago. That's the one I go with. And I do have to disclose, although it's way back, that was four years ago. I, I was recused in Save the Sound litigation as I, as I, as I, as I worked for them in those days. Then so, so, but not only the time has passed, but this is, this is separate, related, but separate in such a way that I feel comfortable working and actually following this since before I was a trustee and following Arcata. So let me give you my take quickly. We spent over a million dollars with them just on, 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 on the investigation.
Yep.
Where they given us a lot of good sophisticated mapping, all the data that could be folded into, into the actual work. But easily we've gone over half a million dollars on, on just studying, studying, and we're just lagging behind. So at this point, at this point, I will, I will support this. However, I do have to tell you, the way they work is, is sometimes they just put those numbers and then sometimes fill them in. They don't just, they don't just track it. So, so track it. And if it happens that it's a little more, a little And if it happens that it's a little more, a little less, but track it. And that's where I, I've had a little bit of, of, of issues with them. And, and, and I just want to put it out there very clear. Now, the key is uh, that they give it to, to us in a way that it's integrated so that the village can maintain that information, because today you, we don't have a, an engineering department. You have another consultant. So my, 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 what I'm afraid is we're spending millions of dollars and it's gonna get lost. So uh, there's a way of handling this is that you capture the product, right? What it's done electronically, it becomes our file in our system.
Yep.
And then it's an asset. Having digital files of this nature are a fortune. They've cost us a million plus, but they're probably worth much more than that if we use them properly, because they then will serve us for many, many years and our work will be proper. So, so I will not, uh, you know, debate anymore on this because it's kind of, this is step six. This, this started, this is probably the seventh year. So fin, let's finish it off. We have, give, give you, give you, give you the chance to kind of uh, fold in the two pieces that are needed, uh, and, and just, uh, take a little bit of my advice with that. So it's not after the fact, but, but actually maybe bringing them on board as a, what you're doing and, and what helps. Actually, they're not very local, so, so that
Right.
Yeah, having that coordination, uh, but if, but if it works that they work with our engineers, with you, if you put all everything on the, on the table, with all your experience, uh, it will, it will happen. So, so let's, I have, I, I, I would move forward with this.
I appreciate that. We do have all those electronic files. When I took over her nanny's office, Victor, I did review those files because I had to review the bid specifications that Arcatis wrote for us to do the work based on their investigation. We're ready to go except for the next phase, which is seven, nine, 10.
Last but not least is our third order, our order of consent with, with the county. The county is the one that really receives and processes sewage. And they also, I want to make sure how much flow we go. And that is the one that ultimately, I would say ten or fifteen years where we're not here involved, is the one that's gonna really, um, have an impact on, on, on construction, rehabilitation, growth, et cetera. So those pieces, that's why this is so important, and I'm sorry to, to drag, but, but, but I, but I think that's why this is, this, we talk about infrastructure, infrastructure where for a village that has this, this is probably, oh, in addition to our roads, this, this is really the infrastructure that, that accounts hurts and, and is, and is failing, so.
It's huge. It's a huge project.
Sorry to take so long, Mr. Hatcher.
Okay.
Jerry, th, th, these were a, a bid solicitation or a, a request for proposals or what?
So we had, uh, Dan can explain a little bit better, but we had gone out for requests for proposals in the past. So what we did was we had a bid from Arcatis for seven, nine and 10 as an extension of what we did um, prior, I guess fifteen, something like that. And then most recently, when we hired a consulting engineer, I asked the consulting engineer if they could provide a, a, a quote as a comparison to the Arcatis price for, you know, for the items identified on page six of 10 in, in the packet.
That was the fourteen thousand dollars less or whatever it was, something like.
Fourteen thousand less from our consulting engineer, which of course, you know, was a bid, was a bid for hourly rates and all of that stuff. So, so we did go out to bid for both of these. Um, but Arcatis quote that I have in front of you now is an extension of something that I think we did. Dan, do you recall, was in fifteen or fourteen?
Um, we, we had brought on Arcatis originally when we were dealing with, um, some, uh, yeah, issues with our, what were their discharges? Uh, then at some point, the board asked us to get some competing quotes for the I and I work. We got a quote from Arcatis and also from Woodard and Curran. Uh, the Arcatis quote was lower than the Woodard and Curran quote, so we went up, uh, working with them. And as we're enter the final phase of study, uh, the manager asked, uh, our current engineer consultant for a quote just to show the board that, you know, demonstrate the due diligence that we're going through to find the best pricing for the village.
So let me ask the question, do we have the right to renegotiate this with them or is this or it's, it's a bid where you do not have the right to go back and, um, discuss it?
I have the right to go back because it quotes.
Say, say that one.
I have the right to go back because they're quotes. It's not a, an informal bid process.
So.
Ultimately, this is a professional service, um, so we're not bound to lowest quote, which gives us the ability to, uh.
Okay, so my, my question, or my suggestion is, it, it makes sense to keep the same people who has already done the rest of the work. I think that if it's gonna do it, it makes more sense because otherwise things are not gonna be apples to apples.
Right, that's right.
So nobody's gonna know it till we have a problem. It gets to be a real problem. But I think we have the right to, to go back and say, um, you know, brought it to the board, the board is saying we, you know, we're in, we're in a fiscal issue, uh, era. Um, there's a lower price, we'd like to stick with you, you know, as a, you know, uh, you know, can you lower your maximum, you know, either fourteen thousand or whatever?
Right up my alley.
Yes, it is.
It, 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 it makes sense to try and keep them, and I think, and try and work. And I think that that's something that you probably could, knowing your abilities, uh, negotiated to the advantage of the, uh, the village.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I, I don't, I don't care that the breakdown changes, you know, from item to item. That's not, that's not the.
Yeah.
So are, are you asking for approval on this? Is that where we are or what?
I wanna, I wanna move forward on it. And then, uh, once I put the bid, which I'm not asking to put out the bid spec because I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the bid spec out to bring back a number to the village, to the village board to let you know, you know, what the actual eight, eleven, thirteen, fourteen is gonna cost us to do the work.
I understand, but are you asking for approval of this tonight?
Uh-huh, I want to move forward on this. This was, this was the, the project that we identified spend capital on, uh, for this twenty twenty year.
Hey, let, let, let me just be clear. This isn't on for tonight's regular meeting. The question is, is whether we want to put it on in two weeks.
Yeah, we can do that. That's fine.
If, if, if that's the case, can you go back to them within the two weeks and see what you can get?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, but.
You'll be enough to, when you write the resolution, Dan has done this before, put it up to.
Okay, let, 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 let's just move on. There's a, a U here. We, we're trying to make progress tonight.
Good, thank you.
Smoking policy. Does the policy smoke them if you got them?
At fifteen dollars a pack, I don't think so.
I know, when I stop, when I stop smoking cigarettes, one to two dollars a pack.
Wow. Amazing.
The best thing I ever did for myself.
So may I've asked Mr. Sonoff to work on this, um, based on some information that you know I've seen in the past and, and some issues that we may have had. So, um, you know, we want to do something with this to memorialize it and get it, um, in front of all the department heads and all the employees, but we wanted to, uh, discuss it with this, with the board of trustees first.
Okay, so would this prohibit smoking in vehicles?
Yes.
Technically, it's illegal pursuant to state law right now.
Right.
Uh, but our policy, uh, predates that law and has been superseded by it, so.
But I, I do have a question in terms of what, uh, is in italics on the first page, which is the definition of, uh, place of employment in the state thing. It, it talks, it talks about indoor, I got that. But then when it, or it talks about school grounds, it doesn't talk about anything else in terms of grounds that I can see of the village that would pertain to the village.
Well, that, that's separate from, obviously, this is the state definition. Uh, I think from a public policy perspective, uh, the inclusion of school grounds was included because of the, the presence of children, which obviously you do have in public parks, but you have more of a mixed, uh, clientele in public parks and on public grounds. But that's a separate issue if there's a policy that the board wants to revisit specifically as that relates to smoking on public grounds and public parks. That's something we can look at, uh, going forward.
One of the issues I have for this is in many places that have barred smoking indoors, people go out and stand and smoke right outside the door. Every time it opens, it comes back in. And according to the definition here, you couldn't prohibit that.
No, uh, in the New York State Public Health Law, it, I think there's a provision which allows
Yes.
local governments to establish their own laws that are more restrictive than the state law.
But what the, the proposal before us is to do away with the local law and, and stay on the state law.
No, it, it's.
But the local law only deals with public property. It doesn't deal with private property.
I understand that. The issue I'm raising is if you, the, the proposal is to do away with the local law.
Which is no law.
Understand, and be, and rely on the definition of this, in the state law and the definition within the state law. So what I'm trying to get to is if you, there's, you know, right now at many village buildings, people who go outside to smoke stand right in front of the door.
I, I, I think what, what, what Dan's getting at, and it, it's a valid point. Uh, and I think in the city, you see some office buildings have done this too. I, I, I think how we can handle this, uh, place of employment, uh, could be any indoor areas it has here or on the property of the Village of Amerika. So, you know, it, it, if you can go have a cigarette, I mean, so you can't walk out of 123, but let's just say, uh, old, uh, 169, uh, Mount Pleasant, stand in front of a building and have a cigarette. You know, you'd have to either go on your lunch break or go somewhere else, so that the, the, the pro, prohibition might be either not on village property or not within a certain amount of feet of a, a village building.
I understand, Tom, but unless you did that through a local law, it doesn't apply.
No, Dan, this isn't about a law. This is about a policy for employees. That's what this is about. And we're allowed to set policy for our employees without a local law.
I assume that this is for everybody, is this not? The lo, local law is for everybody, not just for employees, correct?
No, this local law is a policy for village staff. It's, this local law does not affect the public at large.
Local law that's on the books presently?
Correct. It's a village, it's a village employee smoking policy.
That's what we're asking to rescind, Dan.
Yeah, in favor, because it's, it's obvious, it's, it's been obviated by the state law.
Right now, you want us to rescind our current policy and enact the state policy that's enumerated here?
Yeah, utilize the state policy, correct.
But we could, we, we could, since it's our policy, add to that, you know, within a certain number of feet of a village building.
Yep.
Uh, I, I, I'm confused. Chapter two ninety is the village code? Bob? You're on mute.
So, uh, village code, that's correct.
So this, this is not just for employees? If I'm, unless I'm reading the code wrong?
No, it's a prohibition on smoking in public buildings.
Correct.
We already had, but you're not allowed out of the New York State law to smoke in any public building.
Right. This was adopted in nineteen ninety. I understand, I understand.
Jerry, let, let, let me cut to the chase. What, what is your objective?
Our objective is to include vehicles in the local law so that employees cannot smoke in village vehicles. That's our objective.
Okay. So, a, and if we adopt what the state, uh, has, that would cover you.
Yeah, because the state defines place of employment and includes end company vehicles in that definition. That helps us.
Okay.
The state law supersedes our local law regardless. So the local law we have on the books is, we can't enforce it.
Okay, so, so it's, we're trying to clean up our local law. Um, so how do we need to do this legally? To rescind a, a chapter of our code?
Well, you could provoke chapter two ninety.
Yeah, and do we have to have public hearings on that? Is it the notice, the public hearings, everything?
It would be by local law.
Yeah, okay.
But it, so, and then basically if we, if we revoke all of chapter two ninety, um, how would we have a complaint? Because that goes to the county board of health now, and how would we, um, issue violations? Could we, I guess we can issue violations under a state code?
You, that's right. The, the, uh, state law would govern and the violation would be a state law.
But the, but our local municipality can issue a state law violation.
Well, police officers can, yes.
So we have to get the, the police would.
Where some officers can and not, it's something I have to look at.
Our code also has, hold on, our, our code currently also has smoking within, uh, proximity of a building, fifteen feet of the entrance or exit.
Mm-hmm.
The grounds, okay. It's a general hospital healthcare facility. This can't be from nineteen ninety.
No, it, our local law is from nineteen ninety.
Okay, so what I'm looking at here is the one that you, one you admitted here, that's from, uh.
That's the state. You're talking thirteen ninety-nine? Yeah, thirteen ninety-nine is the state.
Yeah, that was adopted in the late nineties, I believe. The, when the village adopted its local law, it was most likely to address issues with secondhand smoke because a lot of the provisions talk about, uh, smoking being prohibited unless your neighbor allows you to smoke, basically, in the public building. Uh, talks about having, you know, uh, smoking areas within the building. Uh, none of that's allowed nowadays. Um, that's kind of what my researches indicate is uh, it was really done as a, as an attempt to deal with secondhand smoke back in late eighties, early nineties when that issue first started popping up in, in the public consciousness.
Smoking is prohibited, this is all code currently. Smoking is prohibited in all indoor enclosed areas occupied by one person unless all employees and such have agreed to allow smoking.
Yeah.
Seems so absurd, right?
It's absurd. And a smoking room, it, the whole thing is nuts.
It, it flies in the face of modern thoughts about public health.
Yes.
Or. Wow. Uh. All right, so we would just get rid of chapter two ninety, our chapter two ninety. And.
Mayor, provided that our code enforcement officers and officials could write state tickets, state violations.
It could, because right now it's the fire, it's the fire inspectors who write those tickets.
Well, but they're only writing under the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code. Whether they can enforce the public health law, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but what, what this will, what, what, what I think the village manager, and correct me if I'm wrong, is looking to do is when there are employees smoking in our vehicles, you want to have the ability to sanction it.
Yep.
Is that fair?
It's fair.
So, uh, the answer appears to be that enforcement officer means the county board of health, not the village.
Okay.
Okay, but that, that, that doesn't preclude a manager or a, a foreman who sees, uh, an employee smoking in a car, uh, from writing that employee up.
Correct. I think one of the things I note in the staff memo was, uh, if the board withdraws or rescinds the law, there's a possible next step. We could adopt a formal pol, smoking policy, uh, whether it be adopted by the board or implemented and regulated by the manager.
Thank you, Dan. I think that, that's helpful.
The only, the only caveat to that is I'd like to check with my partner, Joanna, whether something that, that's something a village manager can. whether something that, that's something a village manager can, uh, establish unilaterally, or that's something that has to be bargained with the employees. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, either that or we just up, update or change the code to include the definitions from the state and with the, with the addition on the cars, et cetera, and, you know, limits, you know, to the entrances.
That may be easier.
Yeah.
It might be simpler and faster and, you know, less hassle of being challenged.
Yeah, I, I think, trusty net just says the point.
Yep, if that's appropriate and legal, that could work.
So since you have nothing else to do, Bob, we'll leave that in your court.
And I will, and I will gratefully, Dan, thank you. I will ask Christie to take a look at that.
It's coming.
How does it work? Do you, can you, do you have to have a public hearing to rescind and then another public hearing to adopt?
I think what I'm suggesting, what I'm, I'm hearing is that what we should do is prepare a local law that amends chapter 290 to conform to the public health law.
Yes.
But then becomes a local, it's one law, one public hearing, and then it becomes enforceable locally, not just by the County Department of Health.
Tom.
Yes, yes. And we want to include in our lo- in our law, our changes to chapter 290, this, um, zone within the bill, outside the buildings, to go a little beyond just inside the buildings.
Okay.
Right.
And, and smoking in cars.
Well, smoking in cars is already in the state law.
State law has 15 feet. We might, I, I just looked at it, and, uh, we might want to go at 50 feet from the entrance or exit.
Yeah, to do a little more.
Yeah.
I know when you try to go into the, into court, you have to go through a, a small case.
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks for the consideration. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the, the board agrees with the change, but you have to, you have to massage it a little bit.
We'll work on it.
All right, uh, front yard garbage collection. Jerry?
So, um, for the past many months, uh, we have been asking, um, the village residents to bring their garbage to the front, uh, to limit the, uh, time and the workload of our employees who, um, were in and out, uh, during, um, COVID flare-ups and incidents during the pandemic, um, to try to, to try to deal with the absence of employees. We also asked, um, we were asked by the, um, the sanitation foreman and the general foreman of Public Works to be able to do that, um, because it, um, shows us that injuries are less, that the stress on the employee is less, and anything that I can do to reduce the stress on them we're interested and, and, um, amenable to doing. So we have front yard collection, which is not uncommon in many communities. Um, it is, it, it is, uh, also not uncommon to continue to have side yard and rear yard pickup. But, um, there are some benefits to front yard and those benefits are, um, are outlined in, in the memo that we provided. Obviously, to reduce the workplace injury, it reduces the carbon footprint because we have our vehicles, uh, operating less and sitting idle on the, uh, on the streets while the employees are going into backyard by yards to pick up the, the sanitation, the trash. It also allows us to get through, um, the route, um, quicker so that we're disturbing the public, the sleeping public and residents, um, less, uh, in the mornings, um, for a period of time. So we wanted to bring it to the board's attention that, uh, our recommendation, um, and other communities are now considering this, is to continue front yard pickup. And discontinue the side yard and rear yard pickup. I have received a couple of emails from individuals who want to continue, um, the side yard and rear yard pickup. But what we still will continue to have is the provision where if someone is, um, someone has a disability, if someone, um, is, uh, of the, um, uh, an older generation and needs assistance, the Public Works Department can continue to, um, develop and maintain the list for the employees to service that property based on the, um, based on whatever medical and other conditions that that resident, you know, uh, is dealing with.
Did you, you foresee the long-term cost benefit to do this?
The, the fact that the vehicles are idling less, I see an environmental benefit as well as a cost benefit for the vehicles. A cost benefit for the reduction of fuel being used by the vehicles.
Okay.
Get less employees out, mayor, as well, because of the injuries are less when the trash cans are at the street, as opposed to using the large transfer cans, which we have, which are and trying to load them up and trying to get the trash into the back of the truck.
And, and since the, the COVID emergency started, has there been, you know, a, a, a good amount of compliance with this?
Yeah, there has been a, uh, it's been received well, um, because people, people seem, don't seem to have a problem bringing their trash to the front of their driveway or curb and picking up their cans and bringing it back. Obviously, we want the residents to continue to put them in cans, to put lids on those cans, and we will return those cans empty, um, at the curb line. We don't want empty bags and trash just laying out front. That seems a little, seems a little ridiculous that, you know, anyone can go to Home Depot and buy a couple of cans to put their trash in, to protect it from raccoons, etc.
So what do you need from the board?
We would have to change, I believe, our code to identify front yard collection only.
With, with a, uh, exception favor for, uh, health?
With the provision for, for health and, and individuals with disabilities, which of course we want to continue to service. You know, that's a big deal for me, um, with my family, um, situation.
Um, okay.
So we toss this to, uh, Christie and Bob.
Sorry, Christie.
We'll work with them. We're, we're very, um.
I knew it was coming.
We're willing to work with them.
Okay.
So you want to draft law on this?
But where, where is, where is the town of America on this?
They have a public hearing set.
Yeah, I don't know what date it is.
Yeah.
Public hearing in a town of America is a different animal than a public hearing in a township from.
It may be. Dan, Dan, sort of, you know, if they, what they, Paul Thierry was going to have the public hearing, or set the public hearing for the board?
I haven't been following, but I, I did mention in the memo that, uh, several minutes ago, as we go to the town of America, through, well, the American Marchmont District, were discussing the possibility of, uh, keep it going, uh, front yard entirely. And to a certain extent, you know, the re- village residents, you get three pick, three pickups a week. One of those three pickups is already front yard, which is the Wednesday recycling. Oh. And as, as the manager mentioned, I think we've seen, uh, you know, good compliance with the conditions, uh, that we've established during the pandemic.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to give it a shot.
Thank you. I know, I know, we had talked about doing this, you know, more than a year ago, and that there would be a different kind of garbage can and a different kind of garbage truck.
So, yeah, so I could speak a little bit to that. So, so, um, having spent an extensive time out of the office, uh, in the last few weeks, last week in particular, Nora, it seems like the, um, side, side, tipper or the side, the, the truck with the sidearm would be a very difficult proposition for this village because street parking and the extensive, the, the tremendous number of cars that parked from park, from driveway to driveway. And in fact, so in order for us to do that, and having a lot of experience in that, in, in that area, um, people would have to put their trash cans basically in the middle of their driveway, preventing them in and out of their driveway, because for us to use that mechanical arm in between parked cars will be replacing headlights and bumpers all day long.
Okay.
So it's just not something feasible, um, in, in our area. E- even in, even in the shore acres and, and, uh, Oriente section, there's cars parked on the street where they can be parked. People don't seem to use their driveways as much as they use the street to park their vehicles. So even in areas where it's larger, bigger space on the street or, you know, more accessible space on the street, there's still vehicles that would get in the way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Makes sense. All right. We'll look for something on that in the future.
Thank you.
Yep. Full-time attorney, land use attorney. I thought we went over this. Move this back on. And what we have here is the, uh, RFP that was issued in 2017.
The RFPs were updated from the last discussion. Per the discussion. Anybody? I think it speaks for itself. Seventeen, the other one says 20. That's, I think it's the same one. I think it's the same one. I think they were both very important and something that we should be doing. Everybody else feel?
I mean, I definitely think we should be having a different land use attorney than, than the village attorney. We've had a couple instances where we've had to get extra attorneys and, you know, I mean, I, you know, I voted to do it in November of 2018 because everybody else wanted to do it, and I thought it was worth a try, but I think we, I think we definitely need to have different, I think we need to break it out. I think that's, we should have, we, was an experiment that we tried, and I don't think it's working, and I think we should do an RFP for separate land use attorneys.
And how did, do you feel that we needed RFP for a, um, village attorney?
Well, I think the goal here is to get, is, I think if we need to do an RFP for a separate land use attorney, and then that would have to, that would result in changing the structure of how we do the village attorney now, because our village attorney is our land use attorney, so we can't do one without the other, but I think, I think we really, I, I mean, we have it, I, we, I think we need to break out the two functions.
No, you have two separate RFPs. My, the proposal that I am making is that we do both. This way you get expressions of interest. If you, if the expressions of interest please the board in or implemented, then you have, you have something to implement, and if you don't, then you have to go back and start again. It'll be coming up to the organizational meeting in December. Uh, Bob's contract is up in December. It seems that the timing would work very nicely, uh, to continue to try and do this.
Let, let me point something out to the board. We have a new village planner. We have a village manager who's been here a year and a half. We have, we will soon need a new police chief. There has been turnover in every department. There is something to be said for continuity. There is something to be said for historical, uh, perspective. And, you know, we, we have been hemorrhaging good people. And we have, in my view, a very good village attorney. And we do have someone here on staff who is here, uh, full-time, uh, Ms. Mason, who has been working well with village staff, answering their questions. And if you took the time to talk to the village staff and see what their view of the situation was, you know, that would be readily apparent. I could see breaking off the zoning because historically in the Village of America, the zoning had always had a separate attorney. I would be amenable to, to putting the zoning out a bit, but I will not be amenable to changing what I believe is a good structure and has been working well. And frankly, you know, I, I, I have been here with other village attorneys, uh, who weren't as adept at avoiding litigation and getting us out of litigation and, uh, not churning litigation. So I, 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 I think that we have a very good village attorney. I think we have a very good deputy village attorney. I think they have been serving us well. I think that we have a lot of turnover in every department, and this is not the time to be, you know, changing everything all at once.
Let me chime in since, I, I think to move this forward, uh, I think the, uh, there, there are, there are good reasons why to kind of move back to the system that was in place with land use council separate. We have given it a, a try, and there, there, some of this has been, has been discussed, uh, internally by the board, so I, I, I should not get into certain things, but there, there are significant concerns on, on, on that on the, on the land use boards, uh, themselves. So, so I think, uh, with, I mean, we, we did try it, we did the best we can, and I think at this point, it, it is better, better for the village to, to go back to that, to that system. I, I, I've looked at this, I've been in, in three years and a half, I think, I, I, it's not, it's not an easy decision, uh, because it's not a, it, it's, it's not as simple, especially with attorneys, you, you can, with lawyers, you cannot, you know, I, I understand the, the the argument about continuity, but, but this is actually even, even more complicated than that, because it's, 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 it's a legal consultant, so, so it has to work with the boards, and we need to have that really working well. So, um, I, I think that that is a step we, we mu- we must take and, and, uh, let, let's see what, what proposals we get. I mean, on, 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 on village attorney, uh, we have Bob and Christie, and of course, uh, they, they, they will be, they will be deciding, uh, whether they want to have this, this, this scheme, uh, continue, and we, we will go through the process. So that's, that's where I stand, not to delay, strength is to stand is to learn.
I just want to clarify that in my experience in a village, the village attorney did represent the planning board, and he did represent, uh, HCZMC. There was separate council only for the zoning board, with the idea being that since the zoning board interprets village law, you would want somebody different, representing them than the person who perhaps helped craft the village law with the board of trustees. That historically was, was always the case in the Village of America. Uh, but just, just to clarify and not to be argumentative about it, the, the village attorney did always represent the planning board and HCZMC and the other boards as they needed representation. the planning board and HCZMC and the other boards as they needed representation.
You're right, but probably that's not in the last eight to 10 years since I've been paying attention. So that was before, probably when you were trustee, I think.
Well, let's see. Goldberg and his firm represented the planning board before Bob came.
No. No, it was Les Diamond.
Then what was, uh, the, the lady who used to go to zoning?
Um, Anna, Anna Giorgio from Les Diamonds from.
No, 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 the other one. Whitehead, Linda Whitehead.
Linda was the village attorney.
Right, but she also went to land use board meetings.
No, it was, it was less, it was less than Anna.
I'm telling you, Linda Whitehead definitely went to village board, land use board meetings. All right.
I, I mean, I think we should move this forward.
Um, I, I am concerned about continuity and I'm concerned about, I mean, frankly about morale, but, but Bob and Christie have sat through this discussion of whether they should be replaced. I mean, meeting after meeting after meeting. I, I just think at some point, you know, it's just not fair to them. It, it's just not. You know, when I was on the zoning board, I, you know, Attorney Smith from Bob's firm was sitting on the zoning board and I thought there was some kind of Chinese wall between him and, you know, just so there could be some independence between him and other members of this firm, namely Bob and Christie, who are working more with the village. And if that Chinese wall kind of has crumbled for different reasons, I do see the, the logic in having separate counsel for the zoning board. I, I don't know the history and whether it makes sense to have all land use boards represented by one single person. It would seem to me that it might not, since you are trying to keep the zoning board quasi judicial and more independent in its thinking. I, I mean, so I suppose if you want to look for zoning board council, that, that makes a bit of sense, you know, keeping in mind that zoning board council will then likely represent the village in litigation arising from zoning board decisions. And I see that Dan's proposed um, request for expressions of interest says that there would be, you know, separate litigation fees. You know, I, I, I certainly don't think that $60,000 a year you would get much interest for, for representation of all the land use boards. I can't imagine, but.
Anyway, when, when you do an RFP, you don't put a number that you're looking to pay. You put a request for services and they come back with, 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 what they would cost. This isn't advertising for a job like, like you're hiring, uh, you know, an administrative assistant.
Yeah.
I mean, this would have to be all worked over because this, the, the RFPs just don't make sense. I mean, I'm against the whole thing, but they don't make sense. And if we're going to do it, let's do it and make it look professional and not look silly.
And how did we look silly?
Because you, you don't say, oh, we're, we're, we're looking to spend a hundred and ten, you, you don't do that in RFP. You put out what services you're looking for them to provide. And then you put it out and you see what you get back.
In two thousand seventeen, you put dollar signs in there.
Yeah.
It was specified dollars.
But I, I think these were the RFPs that went out in two thousand and seventeen. Isn't that what the model was? That's how we.
That is correct.
I, I didn't put it out in two thousand seventeen.
If people want to take the fees out, that's fine.
I, I think you should be.
I'm going to be doing both, I think, if, if.
Really meant the long-term to the Village of America. I think this is a big mistake and I want to go on record as saying that. I think we have way too much turnover. I think we have way too much litigation. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, yes, we've spent money on outside councils and a lot of that came from this board. And, you know, I, I, I think that this is a big mistake and it's going to hurt us long-term. And I know that there's, you know, a lot of people, you know, for different reasons aren't happy with the village attorney. But I don't think it has to do, you know, anything that he's done or hasn't done. You know, he, he, he's served as a village attorney and he, he did what he had to do under the law.
And then let's just clarify that point. It actually has to work both ways. We need the, the board, the board of the different boards that deal with, with this very complicated issues also need, need to have to weigh in and they have already weighed in. So, so that's what we're trying to. Get a better, let me, I'm sorry, let me finish. Get a better system where we can improve the decision-making and hopefully, yes, of course, avoid, avoid further cases. And it's not going to be easy because in Westchester County, this is, this is very contested, very complicated. Intensive land, this is difficult, this is so. It, it is, it is a complicated matter, but we need to go find, find, find the best alternatives. And this actually goes in that direction.
I, 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 I'm of the opinion that the board should not be saying who to hire and fire around here. That's who the Village of America board trustees does. Yeah, I, I, I said my piece. This is going to blow up in offices.
Understand, but let, let's take this a step at a time. If we, if you do a zoning, I'm sorry, if you do a land use council, separate land use council, then you have to redo your village attorney. It will have changed. But I see we have time to get expressions of interest. I would hope that Bob would have, you know, if he wants to continue would apply an expression of interest for whatever he wishes.
I don't know why he would.
Or decides, you know, we get, you know, expressions of interest that are satisfactory to the board and desirous of the board gets implemented, then we have something to implement. Otherwise you're going, if you only implement one, then you have a problem with implementing the other because you don't have, you don't have any choice.
Can I ask the members of the board who want to move forward, can I ask, have any of you talked to village staff about this? Who interact day and night and day with the village attorney? I'm just wondering. Have you talked to village staff about this?
Have I talked to village staff about that?
Anybody of the three of you who want to move ahead, talk to village staff about their feelings about how it's operating under the current arrangement? It's not a difficult question. It's not a gotcha. It's just, it's a normal question in a situation like this.
I think this is a board decision. The board has to make up its point.
Yes, I understand that, Dan, but the question still stands. These attorneys work day in and day out with our professional staff. And I think that they should at least, you should at least hear their feelings about it. And if you want to do that offline, but if you haven't, then you haven't done your homework and I don't know who you're listening to.
Over the course of months, I've talked to the village staff.
Yeah. Okay.
About this issue, about, about village council?
Yes.
And, and and you came up with this anyway, right?
I came up with what I think is best for the village.
I, I, I know that there's a lot of lawsuits going on in this village. And, you know, some have been brought by members of the Village of America Democratic Committee. And, you know, it, it, it doesn't look good now that we're trying to get rid of the Village of America attorney who has defended us knows. And that might not have anything to do with it, but it's going to look like that. And you should be, be aware of that.
People may make whatever connections they want. I don't think one has anything to do with the other. It certainly, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm, I'm sure. It had nothing to do with it.
I said I had nothing to do with it.
Well, I hope that you get help working on these RFPs so they're not embarrassing going out.
I, I, I just want to add there, I think there's a an assumption that we can say we're going to peel off all these land use boards instead of just zoning and we can have Bob express an interest or not. And if, and if we don't get expressions of interest that we like, then we can just go back to Bob and Christie and, and keep them. I just say you're kind of taking them for granted. I, I think there's a price to be paid for engaging in this that that I'm not sure we want to be paying right now, given our hemorrhage of good staff, as Tom mentioned it. And, um, and I just think, um, I don't think you can even go through this process and assume that Bob and Christie are going to want to, want to stay with us.
That would be their choice. I understand that.
And I think the process would contribute to their choosing not to do that. And I think that's a price that we may not want to pay or that we may regret later. I, I don't know, but I think we're treating people not well these days and it, it doesn't work in our best interest.
This has been handled, you know, ham-handedly from the time Bob changed firms and we were giving him ninety days extensions when that was not ever necessary. You know, it, it, it was, you know, ridiculous actually, because first of all, there, there was no reason to do that. Lawyers change firms all the time and, you know, he was offering exactly the same terms as we had agreed upon originally. But, you know, it, it had to be ninety days extensions and, you know, there's just a disregard for people. Uh, you know, and, you know, you wonder why people leave.
Tom, can I say something?
Of course.
Thanks. So, um, it, we as a board made the decision to have this conversation in January and it's taken until October to do it. And I understand that, you know, COVID has intervened and we haven't gotten through a work session efficiently since before COVID started. But, um, you know, I'm just going to go on record saying I, you know, you and I ran on having a full-time village attorney, which we don't have now. And we, and I said at the outset of this project that I prospect, that I thought we should have a different land use attorney. And my, I'm, I am, I remain convinced, but I think we need to split these two functions up. It has nothing to do with Christie or Bob. It has to do with, with what I think is best for the village. So thank you.
You need to get a clean RFP and put it on the agenda.
Put, let's put this on, if we're not going to put it, I mean, we've been, this has been on our agenda since I think July, but let's put it on either for, if we're not going to put it on for tonight, let's put it on, let's put these on for next week's, two weeks from now.
Well, I, I would prefer to, if people are willing to, uh, to put it on for tonight because this takes time.
I, I'm not willing because.
The, the more, the more you have a problem and, you know.
Are, are you, are you looking for a, a village attorney who's going to be an employee in a village?
No, that, no, that's not what I said, Tom. That's what you and I campaigned on. What I'm saying is I'm not, no, these are RFPs. These are not for a full-time village attorney. That's not what the proposal, that's not the proposal that Dan has put together. But I think we should move these RFPs forward.
You, you said you ran on having a full-time village attorney. Now you.
We did. Well, having a full-time village attorney would have meant a separate land use council. Having a full-time village attorney would have meant that we had a separate land use council. And I believe we should separate those functions.
Okay, so you're not asking for a full-time village attorney, as you said, you ran on in two thousand seventeen.
Tom, I actually would prefer to have a full-time village attorney, but that's not on offer right now.
Why not?
It's not what's on the proposal right now. So it, at this.
Why not do that?
Tom, I think we should just move forward with this and see how we go.
Well, because now you're locked in, so maybe I was the one who got the full-time village attorney in here when we had one who worked for the village. Now, we ran on that. Now you say you want, you, you want to do this because you ran on that.
We ran on that. I got outvoted and so we hired.
Excuse me, Justin was talking. But now, you know, you, you're saying that, you know, you, you, we should have done that, but now you're not doing that. But we have an opportunity to do it if you want to do it.
Regardless of whether we have a full-time village attorney, we need to have a separate land use council. And I think that's what we need to proceed with. And that will require either putting out an RFP for a consulting village attorney or having a full-time village attorney. But I think that the genesis of tonight's discussion is separating out those two functions and I think we should move forward with it.
Just so, just so the record is clear, when I brought this up first time, you know, back in January, I believe it was, it was for a full-time village attorney, but there wasn't support to do that. So I'm happy to go back to a full-time village attorney, but if we have to take it in steps, we take it in steps. Either way, if you have a separate land use attorney, you have to redo the structure of the village attorney. And that's what these two RFPs do.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so I just want to clarify something. So we have someone who's in village hall every day. And we were going to be going to someone who's not in village hall every day. That's what this is going to be doing. I, I just, I just want to point that out. So we're, we're going to go from having someone here all the time, which I consider a full-time village attorney, to having someone not here all the time. And we haven't discussed the ramifications of that with the people who interact with the village attorney all day. It, it, it's, and once again, it's, it's a disregard for staff.
So what I'd propose is that when we get to the regular session to put these on the agenda.
You can make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes.
At the meeting.
Yes.
I, I just want to correct something that I may have misunderstood. I, I want to be clear, land use boards have not asked for this.
Can you clarify that? Members of land use boards.
Yes, but land use boards, the majority of land use boards have not asked for this.
Someone more equal knows. All right. One H. Change in authorities who appoint and supervise village clerk treasurer. Okay. Nikon. And they couldn't tell me a village that does this. Take the appointing authority to the clerk treasurer away from the mayor.
That's actually not, we talked tonight, I talked to Nikon. I can't remember the actual name now. I haven't, I don't have, have in my notes, but I don't have the notes with me at the moment. There is one other's village manager form of government, strong village manager, strong form of government. Uh, and they do, and that's how it's appointed.
Uh huh. Well, there's, there's five hundred and thirty-something village governments in New York State. Why would we do this here?
I, I, can I, I think the point that Dan was making is the similarity is it's another strong manager, weak mayor form of government. And that's how it's it's not that we have five hundred, you know, local cities and villages. It's that it's our specific form. We have an unusual form of a weak mayor, strong village manager form of government, which I think is one of the conflicts that we've had in figuring out what the process, what our processes are supposed to be.
And so in a hundred and twenty-five years, this has been the law in the Village of America. Why do we need to change it now? Why do we need to have a reference? Why is this important with everything that's going on in this community? Why is this important?
Because you have a conflict of appointment in the clerk and the treasurer. And so this clarifies this.
What's the conflict? What's the conflict?
What is appointed by the board and what is appointed by the mayor?
What are you talking about? The clerk treasurer is appointed by the mayor.
We have two positions that are merged.
We don't have two, so every other year, Dan. The law says clerk treasurer is appointed by the mayor. The New York State law says that. You don't really have the reason for doing it.
Say briefly, I think we've been discussing this probably six, seven times now. I think the point that the argument that I, at least that convinces me is that, you know, we've been, we've been changing and making it clearer, it's a very difficult form of management, but it's, it has a lot of advantages for many reasons, so we need to continue improving it. And that's, that's, this is one, one step in that direction to have it all be clear as to all the big appointments or respect to land use boards, planning, zoning, and clerk fits there, that they are all being, you know, passed to the board to have to have that, that consensus decision, or at least a board decision, not a mayor appointment, since we have council management form of government. So in line with that, that is, that is, that is the main argument here. And it has been, it has been appointed by the board previously. It happened for many, many years, it's back in the history. So for many years, it has been like that, and it was never been, actually, it's never been an issue. It has never been an issue, it should not be an issue, because there's no, there's no actual conflict. It's just to make, clarify all those powers, so that there's no problem in the future. Actually, let's fix it now when there's no problem. And actually, this wouldn't go to a referendum now, it's too late. Whenever it goes, let's see if the law gets passed, let's hear for, let's hear from the residents. At least get to that point where the residents speak and not just us. This is probably the seventh time, as I've said, so let's give this enough votes. Let's take this to a public hearing and see once, if that is, if that is, you know, a strong voice, then it will get to a referendum, but let's get to the next phase.
Trustee, you're saying that this is to clear up an issue, there has never been an issue. This board is making an issue. Once again. But, you know, it will not be in time for the a referendum this year. The fact that this is even on here is just, you know, there's so much else that's going on. There's so much we're dealing with, that this board wants to, you know, get into picky, who points who. It's really absurd. It's absurd and it's disappointing. Better find a village attorney who can write it.
Yeah, morale's high in that department. The proposed law that's in the backup refers to clerk treasurer and police officers. Can someone explain what is going on with police officers in this proposed law?
Would be Bob. The, the police officers are governed by the Westchester County Police Act, which you can't change. The question is, why is it in, I think because it was intended to correct an error in the prior drafting.
Because there was a drafting error. And Bob tried to correct it when I first became mayor. But the board left a law on the books, which they were told was wrong and didn't apply and didn't have any standing. And so they left that on the books without correcting that. And now they want to change how the whole thing works.
Got it. So what was a simple fix has now become a super complicated issue.
As a referendum, and that is going to be, you know.
This is a pattern, this is a pattern.
A subject of disagreement on the board, and for what? Okay. Well, do me a favor, do it when I'm running again next year, so whoever you run against me, we could have a nice debate about it.
Well, that's what would happen, right? It would be on the ballot next year. Look, I've read this backup every time it's been on the agenda. And I still just don't see the benefit of doing this.
It's extensive backup.
Is there a benefit to doing this that someone wants to mention?
Yeah, I mean, I think that really, if you look back in the history, until 2014, it was the Board of Trustees that made this appointment. And I think there is a conflict between appointing the clerk and appointing the treasurer, and either, and we're not going to break those jobs out. So I think we should make sure that they're appointed, that they both have the same appointment authority. We could have separate clerk and separate treasurer, and those are appointed differently under state law. And up until 2014, up until Norm took office, it was the board that made this appointment. And in 2014, it became, it was, it was I tried to get the, actually, I tried to get the old tapes, and I was unable to do it. But I looked, I looked through some old minutes, I don't know, it must have been in July, because this was on the agenda so long ago.
Okay, arguably, the board at that time was appointing clerk treasurer inappropriately. And, you know, that's what our research has shown. So to say we want to go back to the way we were doing it when we were doing it wrong, you know, isn't really a great argument. You know, we did it right the last time. I just, all right, yeah. If this is where you want to draw a line, all right, fine, but it's I don't think it's a worthy topic for a law, I don't think it's a worthy topic for the villagers' time and and, you know, effort. And I think it's, you know, with everything that's going on in this world, you're going to put this in front of voters like it's an important thing. But, okay. I imagine a majority of you wants to do it.
I'll just be clear, I do not.
If it's necessary.
It's necessary, huh?
I think we should.
Nothing is unnecessary. I don't think this fool's unnecessary. This is like, not a need to do, this is a want to do. And I think, it's a hard argument to refuse. Letter from a planning board member. This is a letter from the chair of the planning board, Ms. Saval, asking to be indemnified because of a back and forth that happened with the Board of Ethics. Yeah, and I think we were given the advice multiple times by our village attorney that this doesn't rise to a level of indemnification, because there were no charges brought and there was no action taken. And this was written June 28th, and there's been no action taken to date. So I don't see where we're going with this.
Um, I don't, I didn't see this as just indemnification. And I think the question is that there were, a reputation was besmirched, and there's a request that that, the documentation be removed from the website. I didn't see this as an indemnification question.
Okay, frankly, it was my hearing. And, you know, everything, I talked to Adam Stolarow, and he said it was part of the record, it stays part of the record.
So so it's okay for, it's okay to just besmirch somebody's reputation?
I mean, can we put Kathy's letter on the website as well?
Yeah, I just, I just feel like it's in the interest of fairness.
But just, let's be clear. I sat through that hearing, and members of the Ethics Board's reputation were dragged through the mud numerous occasions. And, you know, no one's rising to their, you know, defense.
All right, well, how about this? This Goldstein matter has been hard for the village for a long time. How long does this, I know that this, these are public documents and that they would be foilable, but how long do we have to keep them up on the village website?
I don't know.
Like, you know, front and center, where's a, just click here for all the, you know. I mean, I understand maintaining them as public records, but I don't know that we need to.
Truthfully, it was members of this board who wanted it all on the website. And asked that everything be put on the website, and that's what we did.
Well, I think that was because it was back up to a public hearing.
You know, but truthfully, you know, if I were to run that public hearing again, I've learned a lot, and that was, you know, it was, it was a disciplinary hearing, it wasn't a public hearing like it's, you know, everybody who had testimony should have been sworn. And I would, if to do it over, I would not have let all the opinions, conjunctures, back and forth on both sides, character assassinations. You know, you live and you learn, and I, you know, nothing in my past experience that ever taught me how to run a hearing. But that was not a great day for the Village of America. People's characters on both sides of the issue were being attacked, and it just wasn't fair. And because people didn't have to be sworn, they could get up and just say anything they wanted. So the whole idea of this being a public hearing, like it was a public hearing on a law, was just not accurate. And it was more like an employee disciplinary hearing. And in hindsight, I would have operated it like that. But, you know, I mean, if the board wants to take down what the board has to have up on the website, we can do that.
I have, I have, I mean, that was a suggestion by Kelly. I'm just more interested in having Kathy Zabel, who has asked us now for four months, I guess four months, to be able to have her, to be able to have her clear. And I would also just say, the law required a public hearing. It's not a disciplinary hearing. I don't think it would have been appropriate to have a closed-door disciplinary hearing. I think the state law requires a public hearing.
No.
I think the hearing was conducted in the right way. I think it's, as hard as it was, I think you had to have a public hearing, and I think you did that.
Or the law said hearing.
Hey Nora, I think, I'm looking at her letter, and Kathy is actually says she requests that they be withdrawn. So she's asking that the Board of Ethics letter be withdrawn. It's not just that her letter go up. So, I mean, I thought we could even put her letter up to give her, you know, point of view a fair airing. Or I think at some point, you know, you go to the Board of Ethics webpage, I'm looking at it right now, and it says Goldstein decision, public hearing documents. At some point, they expire, right? I mean, we don't need to have a link on them for forever, so.
Well, we have, we have a lot of stuff that's been up there for a long time, so that's, you know. And I don't think, I don't think that's part of like the retention, you know, program.
At this point, this is all litigation? You know, I mean, where are we going with this? We've been involved in this litigation enough.
Let me try to see if it puts something constructive up there. The, this is a letter that directed to us, right? It's either we just say nothing, or we do say something back, and it's been holding since June. It's a complicated issue, and you've just explained, well, why, so I won't get into it. But what I think she's asking from us is, is in a way to intervene to have this clarified, because she essentially, essentially, the Board of Ethics has said, you know, what you raised has has no, no backup, no, no real support. And what she's suggesting is, I do have it, let's clarify this. If you're not willing to clarify, the Board of Ethics should essentially withdraw. So we're kind of in the middle. So I know Kelly was trying to propose something. It is very difficult, because it's really not, not, not our, for us to undo, the public hearing, the record's there. But at least, we could at least respond to her by saying that we as Board of Trustees, I think we understood what she was trying to say, and we don't want to get caught in who was right or wrong. But at least we take, we take her concern seriously. I mean, she's our, she raised this probably as chair of the planning board, and also maybe as a resident. So at least I think, I think we could interpret what she was trying to say as a concern. That's it, let's take it as a concern, and have that to her, respond to her, that we hear her concerns, that essentially her concern is that maybe there have been more investigations or a certain gender. Well, we should consider that, we hear it, we hear your concerns, and we send it back, and we'll be, we'll pay attention to her, what she's telling us, and we also copy the Ethics Board to see if they want to do something else, withdraw, pursue this further. But essentially, let's not throw anything more fuel to the fire, but at least she, I think she wants a response.
When does this?
Along those lines, I'm trying to suggest something that probably benefit.
When does this end? I mean, God almighty, you know, this board, this community has wasted so much money and time on this. It's absurd. I mean, everybody's got to put on a big boy and big girl pants and say, all right, I serve in public office. Someday, people are going to say things about me, and move on. It happens to me every day. It's what we do here. You know, the Ethics Board got vastly maligned. No one's, no one's looking to protect them, not a word, not a word. They were accused of being in league with humics, you know, to work with humics, you know, to make this more difficult. You know, that was, that was one of the accusations against them. And we said nothing, nothing. Well, one of our boards was accused of being basically corrupt. We stayed out of it. But this, we're going to get involved. You know, and I was fine with staying out of that. But, you know, there's a certain time where, you know, we're just, we're just answering one group of people. You know, we had the Ethics Board in front of us, and, you know, you all heard their concern about the way they were treated. And there are five members of this community, some of whom grew up here, all of whom have been involved in this community for decades, decades and decades. But, you know, we didn't protect them at all. Not one bit. I know if the board members want to call Mr. Saval and tell him their opinions, but I'm sure she knows your opinion. But I don't know what you want to do. I mean, you say, oh, we have a concern here, they know the trustees, that extra mayor Saval raised a concern, because they addressed it. What are we going to say now, we'll address it again?
They said they wouldn't address it. I don't think they did address it.
It didn't happen.
Well, I would say that, you know, I would say it would be, that it would be helpful, and I know that they've been busy, if we got the annual report, and it's not this board's. I mean, we haven't, the Ethics Board hasn't done an annual report since 2009. I mean, we haven't, the Ethics Board hasn't done an annual report since 2009. That's, so this board didn't come into it, you know, real, seeing the previous board getting minutes. But I think, you know, that would answer some of the questions too.
We raised an annual report. You know.
They're hoping to do it. I guess in that, and they've been, I know they've been busy, everybody's been busy, but I think that's something we need to get back to, making sure we have those kinds of reports that are required.
I'm not ready to learn. The next thing is this police reform. Jerry, you want to talk about that?
Mayor, at the last meeting, I had asked for the board's consideration to have the village residents who are, um, interested in potentially serving on the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee to submit resumes to Sally Roberts. Some people have committed, uh, submitted resumes, others have submitted emails, um, expressing interest. That deadline is tomorrow, October 14th, at, at the end of the day, 5:00 PM. At the next meeting, we will discuss the formation of that committee so that we can follow the plan that's outlined in the, in the backup that I created and shared with the board in the past. One item from the original plan was that we, um, we would add Quality of Life Issues, which I don't think Mr. Sonov has the most updated Reform and Reinvention Plan chapters. But I did add Quality of Life Issues as one of the chapters. So, um, that's where we are with that. Yeah, it's a required mandated plan that has to be created. Pretty much putting the responsibility on Chief Executive Officer of the, of the community. And, um, in conjunction with members of the community, stakeholders such as potentially county people, and a couple of, uh, public sessions for everyone to be able to express their opinions and concerns so that the committee can be guided by some type of public input.
Okay, so you, you don't need any board action on this?
Until next month, not until next meeting, end of the month.
Okay.
How many resumes or expressions of interest have you gotten to date?
I haven't counted them then, but I have to say probably, uh, over 15.
Oh, so enough, enough. Yeah, that's great, that's great.
But if people have, uh, deciding to send their resumes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five, right?
Five, we've, we've received plenty.
Good.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yes.
Proposal law to establish permitted off-street parking lot.
Several months back, the board, uh, de-mapped a section of East Old White Plains, oh, East Old White Plains Road, the dead end, uh, which, uh, has been a dead end since they built the thruway. So now that that's been done, uh, you know, we want to, uh, pose three questions. First is whether we want, whether we want, whether the board wants to establish this as an off-street parking lot with permits, uh, what type of permit? And then, uh, maybe from a more fun perspective, what do you want to name it? I think what we had suggested, uh, you know, we'd like to do the, uh, the GP permits, we're actually going to be speaking with the board at the next meeting about some changes we want to make to the parking permit program to streamline it. And as far as the name, I mean, next to St. Vito's, we colloquially call it the St. Vito's Lot unless there's, uh, some other name that, the board think is more appropriate.
Well, I, I would just, I'm fine with that, but I would just check with St. Vito's.
I, I wouldn't want it.
Name.
Well, I, I, because I, I wouldn't want people thinking that, you know, it's only for parishioners, the St. Vito's either.
We can, uh.
We can call it Vito's Lot.
Or are there any, uh.
Not St. Vito's.
Historic, historically relevant, uh, residents of the Washingtonville area.
Good question.
Maybe we have a contest, maybe we have a contest.
Not a bad idea, Nora.
We could certainly look at that.
Name this lot.
Yeah.
Name this lot, right, yeah.
I, I actually think that is a good idea and then just have informal, you know, voting.
We can do that.
Right.
We could set up, you know, get it some requests for nominations and.
Robert, Robert can help us with like a survey.
Yeah, Survey Monkey, you know, he's that. We do have a Survey Monkey account.
So would, would this be a lot that would require a permit and then people would additionally pay for hourly parking?
No, no, it would be a, uh, a.
Okay.
We might, uh, I don't know what the rules we'd like to have for it, but we could make it, uh, available to the general public during the day or on weekends or you'll make it 24/7 permanent. We, that's one of the questions we want to review with the board is to, what we'd like to see done with that lot.
It's a longtime resident of the community that, uh, area used to be called the Strawberry Patch. So maybe that would be a potential name we want to throw in the mix.
Name.
What?
A good name, Strawberry Lots, a good name.
Yeah.
That's option one.
That's your submission, you're on record, Mayor, that's your submission.
My submission. So we're, we're in favor of making this a parking lot, so we can put it on.
Okay.
Everybody's in favor of that?
I am.
All right. All right, so we'll put it up for two weeks. Meared parking on West Boston Post Road.
Originally, Mayor, this started out as a way to, um, regulate and also deal with the enforcement issue along, um, Boston Post Road in immediate area of the, um, of Harbor Island Park and the sewer, the sewer treatment plant. But after further investigation, um, if we're going to expand meter parking in the village, we should go from, from Barry all the way down to, um, in and around the high school area and do multi-space meter installation, uh, machine installation and, um, number the spaces all along Boston Post Road, um, to be fair with everyone who uses that, 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 that parking.
So from, from Barry, all the way in front of the Methodist Church. Because there is, there's an area where there's no paid parking up until kind of across from where brewers used to be.
Hold on, hold on, are you talking with both sides of Boston Post Road?
Yeah, both, both sides.
Yeah, I think I know, East Boston Post Road goes up to Spruce, I think.
It only goes, yeah, it doesn't go all that far up, doesn't go.
We would be, we would be considering, asking you, we would be asking you to consider extending it all the way up to Sedona.
Why would you stop at Sedona and not go all the way to the Greenhaven Road? You have tremendous number of cars that are parked, you know, part of the issue is that you have an automobile dealer who parks one place that you would put paid parking and then another where you wouldn't. Also doing the same thing.
It, it's not that I wouldn't consider it then, it's just it's something I was looking to, um, maybe develop in phases. But if we go all the way to the Rye Line and work on a phase plan, it'd be fine, makes no difference to me.
So where are you, you, you're talking about going from the high school?
Yeah. From the high school gym area, all the way down to Barry at Sedona, originally. Trustee Natchez is asking us to consider potentially moving it all the way down to and including in front of Mangones.
I think moving it all the way down may be a good thing. I, I do think though it needs to be phased because I did see the numbers of how much it was going to cost to buy these multi-space meters and all the space numbering signs. And I, I just don't see us spending all that money in one blow. Um, and, and not to renew a really old argument in the village way before your time, Jerry. But here's where you say, well, you know, if it were pay by plate instead of pay by space, you have to buy all these signs. But, you know, maybe the signs would have this added benefit of letting people know where there isn't a parking space. I mean, already people really push the limits getting too close to intersections, so.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Not knowing, right?
Yeah.
Out where you shouldn't park is also is just a bigger, as big a challenge as sometimes finding where you can park.
Yeah.
Fresh, fresh memory. All Long Post Road, is it now two-hour parking?
Yeah, it's two-hour parking except Sunday for most of the areas that I'm familiar with.
So the meared parking would be also two-hour parking, but just meters.
And we could keep it except Sunday if we wanted to.
Yeah, I don't think we charge for parking anywhere in the village on Sunday.
No, so we would keep it two-hour, two-hour limit, metered parking, using multi-space machines with numbered spaces.
So I would say I'm parking less than I parked pre-panic, but I did frequently park on the Boston Post Road, near St. Thomas Church and, um, I noticed that in the stretch in front of the car dealership, which is really the beginning stretch where this whole hap, whole thing happened, there are cars that are parked there all day long. So I, I do feel, I do feel like there are a lot of businesses who are, you know, I mean, people aren't that busy. But I, I do think that we need to think about the fact that, um, it's nice to be able to park without paying in some places and there may be some businesses who, and some residents who are going to be frustrated about this. So, um, you know, I mean, you have to pay to park in Harbor Island Park if you're taking your kids to games. So I, I mean, I think that we have to think, we, we need to be prepared for some public and some local businesses outcry that.
And, and, and I understand that and I agree with you, but we're talking about a, a commercial strip, the other commercial strip along the village, you know, throughout the village other than Memeranic Avenue. It's not like we're metered parking in a residential zone because we're not doing that.
No, but these are a block from a residential zone. So what's going to happen is people who can't park on the post road are going to go in and park on the residential zone. So I think, I think, I think we need to really think about what the impact of this is going to be. Especially when we are in a situation where people are actually driving and parking less to begin with. So implementing it now, we might not see the real effects until, until the future, until somewhere in the future. But I know that, that although that's two-hour parking, people park there a lot, lot longer.
Well, I just remembered this, it, this, this conversation starting as trying to get some revenue from people who are avoiding paying for parking in Harbor Island by parking along the post road on the Harbor Island side and, and just walking into the park for free. And given our budget constraints, I mean, it seems like we, we should do what we can to get, you know, to, to either encourage people to go into Harbor Island and pay for it or pay a meter, which will be less expen, much less expensive. I'm concerned, I, I join you in concern about these residential, um, areas getting some overflow. But, and, and maybe this is where we phase it more, you know, phase it where we really want to get people paying and there isn't a residential overflow issue or as much of one. And then, and then continue it in both directions or one direction, you know, but phase it a little more. I mean, but we asked Jerry to, to give, you know, put more in, add more sections of the road. And now I, I just, we're losing money the longer we delay on this. I'd like to start collecting some revenue.
Yeah, to a certain extent, one of the things Nora just mentioned with the car dealership and that's part and parcel of the problem.
Yeah.
Right, when you place no value on your parking, people will treat it as if it has no value.
Yeah.
Well, but, but there is.
The parking manager 101.
But there is a value, you can park for two hours. And for those people that, you know, I, I will say, there were many, many, I mean, I, you know, having been, like, I don't, you know, I don't park everywhere in the village, that is a place that I used to park a lot. It was very difficult to get a parking space and I would, you know, park, I would go to a yoga class, I would do whatever I was doing. I would do a bunch of errands and this, and I would notice the cars, the same cars were parked there. So it's not just not valuing, it's also not enforcing. You know, it's just not enforcing.
And paying for parking encourages turnover and that's, that's the philosophy behind parking meters.
Can I ask you one question to clarify something Trustee Lucas said about the parents dropping ki, the kids for their games? I, I understood that that's the, the, once you register for the little league or soccer or whatever, you do get a, you know, like a two-hour pass so, so that instead of, of course, the convenience of just parking there will not be there, but you will have free parking just to drop and pick up your kids. And I'm not on the direct community, but that's correct.
In, in, in June, in the, in the gap between when Memorial Day starts and, um, the, the seasons are over, there are temporary parking passes given to the families of kids who are doing sports there.
We do the same thing for, um, for tennis. We allow.
Yes.
Drop off, um, their child, we give them a 15-minute pass or if they need to, um, park there for a lesson or, uh, a court rental, uh, we give them a four-hour pass. We work that out, the, with the tennis, they pay for it, they pay for a portion of that, not all of it, um, but, but they pay for most of it anyway.
Well, does the board want to put this on the agenda for two weeks? Do we need, is, is there a law drafted?
There is not, at this point. No.
The board want to direct the village attorney or a future village attorney to draft the law.
I, I would say yes, I would say yes, please.
About the rest of you?
Yes.
We've got two yeses, what about the other two?
I'm ambivalent about it. I think, I mean, I think there may be more downside than upside, but I guess we could explore it.
Dan?
I have mixed feelings about it. There's no way that we can do it as a trial basis anywhere.
No.
Too expensive, right?
You either do it or you do.
Yeah, Dan, I don't have spare machines hanging around where I could start, install them or else I, you know, we could do it as a trial basis. But the trial basis is going to, I don't know, need a trial basis to determine whether people are going to be upset about paying for parking or not. I can give you that people are going to be upset.
I share Kelly's concern about going into the resident, you know, pushing people to the residential neighborhoods, which is, which is a big issue, particularly across from Harbor Island, which is that neighborhood more than many is overcrowded in parking to begin with. But I guess we could try it and see what happens and if it is a problem.
So, so Mayor, if I, if I could get the board to approve from the Rye Line all the way to the town line, Boston Post Road, and then I'd go, I'd work with, uh, staff to come up with a phasing plan. We would keep the, the, you know, the, the future phases potentially, um, for consideration in the residential areas and focus more on the commercial areas for the beginning phases.
Yeah, well, sounds like you got, you know, a plurality to, uh, put it on, to work on.
I appreciate that.
Jerry.
Thank you.
And anyone who's been working on this.
Certificate of appropriateness, Nora, you know what this is?
Yeah, well, I, so Christie and I have worked on this. Recently, the skinny house changed hands and it was determined that there wasn't a process for the new owner getting approvals for changing the outside of a historic building. So we looked into the old files, we found some old certificates of appropriateness, we did some research for other communities that do it and just came up with the, you know, a simple form to use. But also there's a, a gap between our local landmarks ordinance, our VAR ordinance. So if you have a local landmark, we have, there are 11, I think, in the village and you want to do work on the exterior of your property, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness to make sure the work is in keeping with the historic nature of the building. But that comes.
To enter into an agreement, IMA with certain conditions and enumerate the conditions.
You know, I was driving in that area today and I saw a bunch of trucks down there. Had they already started work on this?
Most of it is, a lot of it has already been done. I won't say most. A lot of it has already been done.
They received the town's permit today.
Yeah.
No, but a lot of it's been done before they got town permits or whatever.
I thought I saw some email that the town had kind of said, here's our agreement, sign it or that's it.
No, there was a cover memo from their attorney who gave rationales why they changed what they changed, which was not what we had, it was not the basis of what the, this board, I believe, at that time.
We can deal with that at the regular meeting. I think everybody needs a break before we go through the main show. We just, we did actually pretty good tonight.
We did.
We did.
Made some progress. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the work session and I'll see you in 20 minutes at the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, I'll see you in a little while. Anon.
Anon.
Just to have a laugh.
Tom, you're on.
What?
You're on.
Okay.
Augie. Glenn says he's, there's no Zoom connection. I see a lot of other attendees. Oh, I see Glenn. He just raised his hand. I got him. He's good. I don't know what it was.
So long. Rock roll. Trying to get up, but I'm getting on.
Are we on? We on? Okay, we have everybody, Nora, Dan, Victor Kelly, so we. Hi, folks. We are back. And ready for round two of the Village of America Board Meeting. I'm sorry. I'd like a motion to open the Village of America Board Meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We were supposed to have a presentation for the ETH, Ethics Committee, ETH, Ethics Code Review Committee, but that is going to be put off until the 26th of October. First item on the agenda is communication to the board. Anybody want to communicate to the board? Where's the hand up here?
First is Carlos.
Let's go to Mr. Garcia. Then we'll go to Glenn. Mr. Carlos Garcia's your hand up.
Unmute your microphone.
Mr. Garcia. His hand was up during the workshop. That might have been an inadvertent hand up.
Okay.
Okay, let's try Glenn. Glenn?
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, Glenn.
Hi, Glenn.
We're all in mourning, of course, over the New York Yankees. Sorry, Jerry. Um, couple of things. You had the vote last week, Black Lives Matter. I have no problem with the Black Lives Matter. I do have a problem with the process. It seems that this board comes to making laws, basically you have it drawn up and then it's, we're presenting it to you, you've got three minutes, but you know what? We're voting on it tonight. It's a done deal. And it's not the first time you've done it. I think that anytime a new law is proposed, it should at least be open to public comment for two meetings and then the third meeting you vote. I don't think any public law should be introduced and passed at that meeting because then the input put to the, from the community is meaningless. You're not going to change the law. If you're putting a law on the agenda and allegedly you're going to vote for that law that night and that is the first public comment period for the law, what you've basically told the public is your comments are meaningless. The best you could do is maybe a slight adjustment. Propose a law, put out what the law is, put it on, on, on the agenda, discuss it at two meetings, third meeting, vote on it. I think it would take a six-week process for any law that you introduce to the public. I don't think that's asking too much. Then you can get full input on some of the laws and not be in the situation you're in right now with the 20-foot, five-foot setback and some other things that you've done. Number two, let's talk about the village attorney. I used to tell the village attorney back in the good old days, nice to meet you, don't buy a house in the village. That's what the turnover was. That's what the history of the village attorney was. Village attorney ended up being a political appointee. Every time an administration changed, we had a new village attorney. We finally have some continuity. You've lost the village engineer. You got a manager here for a year and a half, third manager in five years. Just started a new HR program. What is it, Mayor? The, the police chief is soon leaving. And I hate to tell you this, but when you go out and you talk to your rank and file employees, a lot of them, it's like they're in Vietnam. It says, instead of one year and I'm out of country, it's, how many years do I got left to? I get to 20 years and I could put my papers in. That's not the way the village should be running. And by the way, you know, I, you know, I, I hope that, you know, the village attorney doesn't come back and say, hey, now that, now that you're taking the bids, you know what? I'm going to cost $20,000 more because every time you turn over one of these positions, you are now paying a premium for that position. When your reputation is you turn people, you turn people over in, in your, in your village, well, guess what? I'm going to price in the fact that I might not be around here too long. Why don't you look at that, what, how the village manager's salary has gone up over the last 10 years? Every single time you bring in a new village manager, substantial increase. The new village engineer probably going to be at a substantial increase. If you look to replace this village attorney, I'll tell them right now, they should add $20,000 to what he, to what he originally offered you because you're going to find out replacing these people doesn't come cheap. The other thing is, and by the way, it's not the village attorney's fault that the village gets sued. The village gets sued because some of the decisions that are made by some of the people in the village aren't the brightest ones in the world. You can't change laws at the last minute. You can't, you can't interpret things more restrictive than they are. People have a right to sue. If that's what you want to do, that's why we get sued. That's simply why we get sued. On the breaking up of, um, one thing you keep in mind is you have a village attorney who writes your laws and then you have the planning board that does its thing. But when it comes to the Board of Appeals, maybe you should see what every other community is doing because I could understand why you'd want the same attorney for the village in the Board of Appeals. Because if the Board of Appeals looks to interpret a law and they have And they have a separate attorney. And he interprets the law differently than the attorney who wrote it for you, the trustees. That's a beautiful lawsuit waiting to happen. If you write a law. Your attorney writes the law. He knows what you want. It goes to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals interprets that law differently than you wrote it. Their attorney interprets that law. With the Board of Appeals, you'll now have a lawyer for the village and a lawyer for the Board of Appeals. With different interpretations of the same law. That's probably why you'd want to keep your village attorney. For that, the Board of Appeals and. For your HMZ boards.
Thank you.
Okay, West, uh. West Coast Road. Starts at I, I M Burgers, goes all the way up. And Grant the Parking. Put on the whole Post Road, absolutely four. There's a couple of spots where you have apartments. You're going to get some bark back. You have apartments directly for us from the high school. You got apartments right next to the. Town Center. You might get a little pushback from the town center. And then you have the apartments all the way up. By where the Pediatrics is just off of North Barry Avenue. Through that slanted in, so I'm not even sure that would be considered Boston Post Road. Otherwise, there's absolutely no reason. You would actually encourage people who live in the apartments to vacate the spots at eight, nine o'clock in the morning. Because if you sleep into 11, 12 o'clock. They don't get over there to mark the tires until 10 o'clock. And then you have to wait two hours. So at best, they go back at 12 o'clock. So, you know, and if you park at 10 o'clock in the morning, you're a kid going to school. By the time they mark your tire, 3 o'clock, you're out there before you're ever going to get a ticket. So putting those metered spots in is actually a very bright idea. Be aware, September, we have the kids and we have a split schedule with the kids going to school. So you have kids who might be going back and forth to school at odd hours. And also, if the mayor, you might want to do a tuitional on. How to properly fill out an absentee. Ballot. LMC TV where you, where you just show people exactly how to fill out an absentee ballot, where to sign it and everything.
Thank you, Glenn. Glenn, your time.
And last, lastly, when does early voting start?
My, the 24th. Thank you. October 24th, early voting, Town Center, for those around here. Ms. Daria? La, Locker? Losha? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's Locker. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, so I tried to, I was going to speak up during the, the last meeting, but. It, it got pretty caught up talking about the Black Lives Matter mural, so. I wanted to speak up during this meeting. To talk about how concerned I am about the amount of money that the village is spending on litigation. When so many other things seem much more important. So I looked at the abstract of bills to be approved and saw that roughly $55,000 relates to legal fees for litigation. With most of that pertaining to two matters, Hampshire and Cindy Goldstein. Um, and I heard that the village is bearing the expense of Goldstein's lawsuit against the village. Is that true?
The village is defending the lawsuit and that costs money.
Um, but I'm asking if, if the village is, is bearing the expense of Goldstein's lawsuit against the village.
I, I think, as, as the lawyers say, Dara, that's asked and answered. Yes, we're paying for ours, we're not paying for hers.
Interesting. Well, in any case, I just wanted to ask what the status of these lawsuits are. And how much more you expect to spend before they're resolved.
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, well, those are my questions. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dara. Okay. Stuart.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
When the leadership of the Board of Trustees changed in 2017, residents were promised in a campaign fired that quote, Tom Murphy and Nora Lucas. Put the needs of residents before the wants of outside developers. Since then, the village has mostly done the opposite. By enabling outside developers to increase their profits as their project damage residents interest. While I think we all understand that it's not the Board of Trustees' responsibility to oversee development or the building department. It is your responsibility to see that the village has a building department capable of protecting residents' interests. I would like to go through some of the most egregious abuses over the last three years. The mason at 270 Waverly Avenue. When the project was conceived, both the draft environmental impact statement. And final environmental impact statement. Made it clear that quote, a grading and drainage plan has been prepared by the project engineer. Grades, grades or elevation on the site will not change substantially. Since the site is currently level and paved. And changes in the grade are not required to implement the proposed plan. Building permits were issued in the summer of 2017. At the end of the wild, wild, mess period of development under the Rosenbloom administration. The first thing the developer did was bring in 25,000 cubic yards of fill. To raise the site up to seven feet. In late 2018, I advised this board that the mason was being built without approved plans. For those listening at home, I'll repeat. The building department allowed the mason, the largest construction project in the village over a decade. To be built on the banks of the Sheldon Drake River in the middle of our floodplain. In the village's most densely populated neighborhood. Without approved plans. By the time the project was substantially completed in 2019. It had the following documented issues in addition to the 25,000 yards of unpermitted fill. The buildings are seven feet taller than code allows. Buildings are in violation of front yard setbacks on Waverly. The site lacks the code required amount of parking as well as numerous other defects. Despite the numerous clear violations of village code. Building department began issuing temporary certificates of occupancy in 2019. I'm requesting that this board work with the village manager to ensure that no permanent certificates of occupancy. For the mason are issued prior to the developers receiving variances for the existing violations of village code. Brixmore CBS North Shore Shopping Center. Despite it now being home to my favorite supermarket, this construction has also been ripe. Even though the project has been underway for over four years and substantially completed for a year. The following documented issues remain unresolved. The required stormwater management system has demonstrably failed. Discharging polluted untreated stormwater into the Mamaronek River every time it rains. Over a hundred of the required landscape trees, shrubs and plantings are either dead, missing. And are required to be replaced. As of last week, all the stores in the new building were operating without certificates of occupancy. Or even temporary certificate of occupancy. I'm requesting that this board work with the village manager to ensure that Brixmore meets their responsibilities. Under their planning board approvals, license agreements and building permits regarding the stormwater management practice, landscaping. And ADA compliance. Or permanent certificate of occupancy or issue. 207 Grand. 207 Grand Street.
Time is up, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, respectfully.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Public hearing. Next item on the agenda is public hearing on PLA 2020 Dogs in Harbor Island Park. And we have gotten. A lot of feedback on this. And. We're going to take a shot at it tonight. Does anybody wish to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Pat Jones?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Thank you. Okay. Before we hear from the public, is anybody on the board? Wish to comment upon this law? Victor, I see you speaking. I can't hear you, bro. It's like all gobbled.
We can hear you, but it's all garbled.
It's, it's like you're gawling.
Can you go in and go out?
He's going to try and go in and go out. Nori, do you have anything like that, or just want to hear from both?
I mean, no, I mean, I, you know, I think that. I think there are a few people who may want to speak about it. I think that, um, just to clarify. It's allowing, dogs are not allowed near the playing fields, in the, on the playing fields or in the playgrounds and that. Currently, dogs are allowed in the early morning and this is expanding, expanding it to the times the park is open. But it's all dogs on leash. It's not dogs off leash and it's not a dog park. Which is something that the Rack and Parks Committee and a subcommittee are really working on to try and create a dog park, but this is simply to expand the hours. In which, and, and locations in which dogs can be in Harbor Island Park on leash.
Okay.
With their owners or responsible parties.
Victor, you back on, buddy?
Coming in. Almost there.
We can hear you, though.
I'm here now. Yeah. I think my, my computer is zoomed out.
Yeah.
Here we are too. Anyway, I, I was just asking to, for a brief explanation before people, because probably some know, but some probably don't know what's hap, what's the change? So, so. Public, but probably you already did that.
And Nor, Nor, Nor handled that one nicely.
I'm, I'm sure. Okay, good.
Okay, um, Ms. Elizabeth Young? Hello? Elizabeth, unmute your mic.
Okay, great. Um, thank you very much. Just wanted to express my support for allowing dogs to walk from dawn to dusk. Over just opening hours in Harbor Island Park. Very much appreciated. And it's also a great location because it has access to parking. And should therefore be accessible to more residents. So just wanted to express my support. We do have a dog. And, and, and we've been following the rules as best we can. Walking on streets and such. And so this would be, I guess, outside of the original Rushmore, Rushmore location. This would be an extension of where we can walk our dogs. So thank you.
Let's go to Kristy Derico, and then we'll go to Glenn.
Did I unmute myself? Can everyone hear me? Okay, good evening. Mayor, I, I was. Joined with you when you raised the issue of getting calls about malicious gossip. And my weekend was ruined by almost the same calls that you apparently received. And I've been a servant of the village for many years. 10 years as village justice and two years as trustee. And the budget's posted, so everyone sees the compensation. But they don't see the time and dedication that goes with that. We've been asking to meet with the board. There has been a malicious whisper campaign. One can never say who begins such rumors. But it really is maligning the court and what we do to serve the public. And to keep our doors open and to do what we need to do as justices. So I'm asking for an opportunity to be heard. And I don't appreciate the malicious rumors that have been circulating that make our job so unenjoyable at times when we should just be. Pulling up our sleeves and getting down to work.
I, I appreciate that, Judge Derico. Right now, we're in a public hearing about the door law.
Fair enough. I wanted to get the opportunity to put in my comment since we weren't allowed to speak during the work session. And, um, so that's, I've given that and I hope to hear from you.
Thank you, Judge Derico. Mister, Mister Glenn?
Yes. The one thing that I would ask is that as part of the provision. Any dogs that are going to be walked down the harbor have to be licensed. You have a licensed law in the village as it is. That way, you're sure the dogs down there have their proper shots and everything else. So if you want, if you want the privilege of walking the dog in Harbor Island Park. You have to go to the trouble of making sure your dog is licensed here in the Village of Mariner. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Gallagher?
Yes, this is Judge Gallagher. Good evening to the board and I would like to echo some comments that. Judge Derico said earlier, I know it's out of place, but I'm in the same boat that we could not speak up during the. Working session. So if you permit me a moment to, to say a couple of things, I appreciate it. I just want to say that I'm finishing up my 12th year as a Village of Mariner Court and I'm really proud of the work the court does. It's an institution that has been around for over 100 years. And I think we do good work and I think we're one of the pillars of the community in the operation of the court. We've been operating for many months now at 50% of our, of our staffing. We normally have four full-time court clerks. Due to retirement of one and another clerk taking a job elsewhere. We've been functioning with a 50% staff level and. As one of the busiest local courts in, in the state and certainly in Westchester County. We can't allow this to continue. We're not able to do the work of the courts because of these vacancies. Now. We have been asking the board and we've been asking the village manager now since May. To sit down and speak to us about how to resolve. The filling of the vacancies because we have to collaborate together. We are too independent. Part, parts of the government. The court is independent of the municipality. And the separation of powers make things difficult at times, but we have to work together. To fill these vacancies so we can do the job of the people in the court. They, via, so I would respectfully ask the board to intercede here because. The village manager has refused to meet with us over several months despite several requests, which seems very strange for. For, you know, the heads of our department not being able to speak with the village manager. When we're in such a crucial situation. So I'd ask if the board would consider interceding and scheduling. An opportunity for the judges to meet with the board. With the hope of trying to resolve this impasse, which is having a huge impact on our ability to do our jobs. And so I respectfully ask for you to consider that request and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments on the door law? Marissa? Unmute yourself, Marissa.
Okay, I just did. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much for, you know, giving us the opportunity to speak, mayor and board. I'm a longtime resident of the village. I have a dog and. You know, I'm within walking distance of the beautiful harbor and would be so appreciated. I just want to lend my support to this new. You know, potential regulation to just be able to walk on leash with my dog at any time into the park. Rather than getting into my car and having to drive to either Larchmont or to Rye, you know. To be able to walk in a park with a dog at any time. I think it would be a really great thing for the village to expand the hours there.
Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna comment upon the dog law? I don't see anybody else. Anybody aboard? Any questions or concerns?
I guess, I mean, this was brought forth by the rec committee, I'm the liaison to the rec committee, and, um, they, um, I think they would love to have had to have recommended that dogs be allowed in many other parks, but, um, I think the decision was that Harbor Island Park seems to be the most central park and the biggest park, and, um, that it would be the appropriate place to try and give dog owners a little bit more of a place to walk their dogs. And, um, obviously, it would be great for, to have a place where dogs can be off-leash, and that's, that's something going forward, that's, we're working on a dog park, but this is, I think, something that they proposed, oh, almost a year ago. So, I'm speaking for the, I think I can speak for the Parks and Rec Commission to say that they are in support of this.
Anybody else aboard?
Um, I'll speak as a dog owner and someone who's completely wild about my Tito. I think not only is this, um, good for dogs and dog owners to be able to be on grass and, and play with their dogs. In the summer, the pavement can get so hot. I've seen some really horrifying pictures of dogs whose pads on their feet have been burned off by asphalt. So, I think this is a nice, a good thing for dogs and for people. I do think, though, that there are some irresponsible dog owners out there, and I, I think particularly in the beginning, as there has been some opposition to this, I urge dog owners to pick up after their dogs and to respect the leash component of this. You know, if, if they don't, I fear this is gonna be ruined for everyone. So, I would just make a public plea that people be responsible with their dogs. And I know we're, we're in a crunch for staff, but I hope that, you know, we can put a little effort towards, you know, keeping our eyes on this, making sure people are following the rules. But I, I'm thankful to the people who've supported this, I'm thankful to the Rec Commission and to Nora for getting us this far.
Now, I, I have concerns and misgivings about, you know, the proximity of children and dogs and people not being on leash. But, you know, I'm, I'm willing to give this a try. And there's, there was a couple of, a long time ago, residents that have expressed those concerns too, that we got in emails today. I'm, I'm of the opinion that it's worth a try, but I think this is something we really gotta watch carefully. Yeah, I, I, I've told the story before of, uh, me being in Harbor Island Park and a, an off-leash dog, very far away from its owner, confronting me aggressively, and, uh, you know, it was uncomfortable, and, uh, I'm not a little kid. So, I think we have to, you know, be very, very diligent, uh, in enforcing our leash law.
Yep.
Like I said, I'm willing to give it a try.
Um, and maybe Jerry can speak about this, but one of the reasons that, um, it's feasible to do this in Harbor Island Park is because, um, Jerry's been able to, in his current budget, deputize other people to, um, enforce the codes regarding dogs on leashes. And so, one of them is actually, they're both people who are in the park a lot, so just as, in the course of their work, they'll be able to monitor. So, it's to Kelly's point, I think that's something that we can, we can do in Harbor Island Park in ways we can't do it in some of the other parks.
Good.
No, so, um, because the, the dogs were only permitted from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., now, what I can do is direct code enforcement to take a spin through the park during their daily rounds and their routine elevation of the village to run through the park as well now, to see the same thing and to look at the same thing. And I know, I know that Officer Bell, who, um, is down there in the, uh, in the police car on, on weekends, does a very good job at making sure that the dogs are not in the park on off-hours, um, which of course will change now with this, with this law. So, um, I know that he'll be looking out for dogs off-leash, 'cause that'll be the biggest problem.
And if nobody else has any other input, I need a motion to close.
Just one more thing, to Glenn Tippett's comment about dogs needing a license. If a dog, if somebody cited, I mean, dogs have to have a license in the village, correct?
Yeah, so I think all dogs in New York State have to have a license.
Right, so if the dog doesn't have a license, what happens? And they're, and they're, you know, and they're, I mean, you're not gonna stop, I mean, I'm, I assume that people aren't looking for the dog tags, they're looking to see if there's a dog that's unleashed in a park. But if there's an unleashed dog in the park, I would think that there's an automatic provision for a dog that doesn't have a license.
Yeah, I think if you, if, if a dog, usually, I think how it comes up usually is when a dog bites somebody, and it's like, you know, if the dog behaves itself, nobody ever looks at it, right? It's like anybody's pulling over dogs and asking them for the license or registration. Uh, we have another hand up of residents, Mr. Spats?
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Mayor, I, I'm not sure if you can hear me. Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I wanted to speak about the dogs and the park. I wasn't actually gonna say anything, but I can expand upon, uh, Trustee Lucas's inquiry. I know, for example, in the city of New Rochelle, if, whether you're a resident or not, if you plan on having a dog in the park, there are permits that can be purchased through the municipality. And indeed, um, if someone does have a dog on a, uh, the park, within the park, and doesn't have a permit, they could be issued a, a summons. There's twofold on this. One, in the event, unfortunate event of an animal biting somebody, they, it's a lot easier to address the issue, um, especially if they are permanent and on record with the municipality. There is also the ability to gain revenue on a non-intrusive way with that permitting. I love dogs, I'm a champion of rescues, think that would be phenomenal as a dog owner, having that access to our Emerald on the sound. But I do, I would agree that the ability to have that permit with the individual, or at least on record with the municipality, would help the municipality enforce and/or address the issues should something occur. But I love the idea and then 100% support that.
Thank you.
I, I'm just looking, I think, to, to answer, to answer Andrew, that, um, New Rochelle requires permits in parks that are, that, in which dogs are allowed. But they have specific dog parks, so I'm not sure if it's for every park or just the parks in which dogs are allowed, but that's maybe something that we consider, and I know that maybe that will be considered as the, um, as the plans for creating a dog park get, get more formalized.
I believe, I believe that's specifically, Nora, for, for dog parks in New Rochelle, because I know there are residents of Mamarone who drive to New Rochelle.
Yes.
Right, you know, and those are dog, by dog parks, just for people who are confused on this. Those are parks that are enclosed, where dogs run free without leashes.
Right.
And that's not what we're talking about in the village right now.
There's another resident, Carr. Can you identify yourself, please?
Hi, it's Carrie Sergio.
Hi, how are you, Carrie?
Good, how are you, mayor, board? I just wanted to chime in here. Being on the Parks and Rec Commission and also on the subcommittee, where we're also looking into a dog park, which, as Nora said, is completely separate from this. I really just wanted to stay that expanding the allowance of dogs in the main part of the harbor from when it opens to dusk isn't really that big of a stretch, when you consider that the dogs are already allowed on the Rushmore Avenue side. So, this is just allowing people to just have a bigger area to be able to walk their dogs on leash. And, yes, it is entirely true that there are bad seeds with everything, and there are irresponsible dog owners. But I often find that in more public places, such as parks, people are watching, and people speak up when dog owners are being irresponsible. And I find that it's often cleaner in areas such as that than walking in my own neighborhood, where I constantly see droppings left behind from irresponsible dog owners. But I would not let that deter something like this from happening, because it's, right now, the only place where you really can walk a dog on leash through public park. And I just think the residents would be so incredibly grateful if the board were to extend, um, the dogs being able to be in all parts of the harbor, other than the playground and the fields and the beach, obviously. But it would just be a really wonderful thing for dog owners to have a place where they can take their dogs. And I know everyone would just really, who has a dog, would really appreciate it, and I hope that everybody respects this if it goes through. But there'll be people watching, because nobody wants, nobody wants something as wonderful as this to get ruined. So, I appreciate all the time and effort and the consideration, and I hope it goes through.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Rich Langraber?
Hi, board, hi, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time tonight. Um, I was here to speak about something else, but I thought I'd chime in. I was a dog owner until recently, um, I plan on being a dog owner in the future. One thing I will tell you, my experience has been owning a dog has brought me more friends and more, you know, people in the community, uh, together. And I think that having the ability to bring your dog to a park like Harbor Island is gonna be an amazing thing. 'Cause I think, you know, we're always talking about division, and dogs bring people together, because everybody has a common, common, their dog and tell them stories about their dogs. So, I, I love the idea. I'm so very good, I, I'm fine with you guys saying that we need to have a dog license. Like, that, that actually is, is a very good regulation. But I disagree with the other gentleman who said that we should have a permit, and that's a good way to generate more revenue. I am a village resident for four and a half years, and I think we pay enough in taxes that now that we have a dog that's gonna go into a park, I don't think it's necessary to have a permit to walk to the park. If it's a dog park where you have to be registered to let your dog off leash, I'm, I'm with getting a permit for that. But I think that residents should have to have, buy a permit, uh, so that they can bring their dog to the park. So, thank you, and that's my comments.
Thank you, Rich. Okay. I don't see anybody else. Another motion to close this public hearing?
So moved, second.
Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
That's us.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? I. Okay, would anybody can make a motion to adopt this public law?
I move that we adopt this law.
I'll second.
Augustino. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
That's us.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Yes, with the caveat that we, we have to watch this closely and make sure that it's, uh, implemented properly. Good luck to all the dog owners, and, uh, hopefully, this will all work out, and, uh, we'll have a, a dedicated dog park sometime in the future. Thank you. And just like that, it was a law.
Just like that.
And the next item up is the order of bills. And the first item is the abstract of order of vouchers, the manuals. And this is for $4,000, $4,008.85. And, uh, this is basically order charges, the rest is, you know, what it works. Somebody have any questions or concerns about this? Okay.
Um, I have one question on the order of bills, it's with the material that's with it, which was a transfer summary. Jerry, I assume that I assume that on the $96,000 is from the store, is I, is, and we're getting, it's being submitted to FEMA?
Yeah, so we submitted a, an application, the preliminary damage assessment that we gave security to be submitted to FEMA was over $1.1 million.
Have they sent us a check yet?
I, I would expect 75% of that as soon as the declarations have all been issued.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And thank you for your diligence on that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The abstract in front of us is the $4,008.85. A motion to accept it.
So moved. Second.
Or you call, Lucas? Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
That's us.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? I. Next abstract, the order of bills is $221,657.07. A lot of this is Medicare reimbursement to our entire workers. I guess that's, if you're over 65, right? Part B, you're reimbursed. Okay. I have a question on page four, it's on questions, requests. Civil Pageant and Riesel PC, uh, their bill for August 2020 is $85,965.07. Could you send me, and send the board, you know, I'm asking for it, is a, a total of their whole billing for the year? Okay. That's the only issue I have. Anybody else?
Well, I, I do have a question that, um, because it adds printing costs. Would and this was, um, for October work. And that, that was, that would be the
No, I said August 2020.
August hearing work.
It's August 2020.
But even that is, is after the hearing.
Yes, it is, that's true. You know the printing costs were, you have the bill?
Sorry, Augie. And, and I know that sometimes attorney bills come in, you know, August for work that was done in June, so that, that could be what's going on here as well.
And I've noticed that lawyers have very expensive printing machines.
Well, they have to put them in, oh, you have to make so many copies and
Well, while he's looking that up, does anybody else have any questions?
Aren't, isn't a lot of stuff just filed electronically now?
No, but there's still stuff you have to
I mean, the, the reason I ask is, 'cause the printing costs are typically involved with court filings, and
Yeah.
And so, you know, for the hearing, I don't know why we'd have printing costs necessarily.
I might be able to answer that one.
You might be, Dan?
I said Bob might be able to.
Bob, do you know?
I, I, I do not. I wasn't involved in that, so I don't know.
We have to look at his bill. Question? How much are the printing costs? Everything is $15.50. It's $15.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right, uh, there's a couple of residents with their hands up. Go to Mr. Garcia, we tried him before. Garcia? Can you unmute your mic, sir? Mr. Garcia, sir? Can you unmute your mic? Okay, I think Mr. Garcia is hitting this by accident. Okay, I think Mr. Garcia is hitting this by accident. Go to Mr. Tinker.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Same page, page four, top of the page, Abrams, Abram Svenstroman. Um, I think the amount is 13,000 on the Acela matter. What is the Acela matter?
Bob, can you answer that? Uh, yeah, it's a dispute over software that the village purchased and, uh, isn't performing as it was anticipated.
Are we the, are we the plaintiff or the respondent?
We are. There's no lawsuit yet. At this point, it is a notice of default that was sent to them and to another company that worked on it.
And that cost, I'm sorry.
For breach of contract.
And, and that cost $13,000 to put in?
That's what the bill says, yes.
Okay. And did the board authorize that?
Yes.
When was that?
Sometime ago in spring and late, early summer.
Okay, I, I went back and looked. I saw one meeting where Acela was discussed in executive session. I saw no decision in the minutes on that. So I don't know if you guys took a vote and just didn't record it or didn't take a vote, but, um, that's $13,000. Um, I don't know if there's more coming.
Thank you.
Um, page eight, I was hoping somebody might have a comment, but guess not. Page eight, Carousel Industries of North America Telecommunications Services, $27,000. Is this a new company or have I just been slack? Or is this just a new name of an old vendor or something? I'm wondering what, what services they're providing.
Jerry?
New telephone service.
I, I can see that by telecommunications. I mean, I don't know what we spend on telephones, but is this a month? Is this a year? Is just, you know, the board's $27,000. Times are getting tough. I hope the board knows what it's paying for. Page 13. Uline, five big and tall leather chairs. Was there a purchase order on this or were these just bought online?
Jerry?
Page 13?
Uh, page 13, um, second block down the bottom of the block.
Done. Fine. He's questioned the five department.
I'm sorry?
Talking to Jerry.
Okay.
The Uline chairs, also its item, it's 555.
Yes.
There was a, I don't know if there was a purchase order for that. They're pretty diligent on issuing purchase orders or, or producing purchase orders. I can't recall if there was a purchase order.
Okay, you're supposed to be I, I'm sorry.
Right. Jerry, we're due for the fire department.
Yeah, for the fire department. This might have been those chairs that we discussed many months ago. Answer the question if there was a purchase order or not. I don't recall.
So nobody knows what Carousel Industries, what's exact telecommunication service they provide for the village?
Jerry, can you elaborate?
Or if it's a month or a year that's four or six months or a quarter or something?
If the board recalls, we switched telephone providers and servicers many months ago. Uh, based on a presentation that we made to the board, it was Augie, Dan and I, Carousel is that company.
Oh, okay. So this is our major phone provider now? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's try Mr. Garcia. Hello?
Microphone, Mr. Garcia, please.
Mr. Garcia? Okay. I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta figure Mr. Garcia is, you know, like a lot of us, learning technology and, uh, hopefully he'll get a handle on it. All right. Any others have questions about the order of bills?
I have a question. Jerry, page, and Augie, page four. There are two Jason engineering bills. One, one is, one is relates, relates to support litigation. So that's clearly in that group, which is, which is legal. The other one is Jason Engineering with the remediation for Taylor's Lane. That has been typically in engineering. How do you, how do you keep, how do you, why would you want it to charge to the legal department?
No, yeah, that's a good catch. I'm not sure if that should have been out of, out of engineering. I think, I think, I think it just I'm pretty sure, right, Dan? That's supposed to be out of engineering.
I believe so, unless it's attached to some purchase order that may have been, uh, charged to legal, it should be engineering.
Yeah, I think Victor, you're right. That should be engineering. Because it's, it's, it's associated with the, um, report at the landfill that was laying the site.
I'll recall engineering.
Are we, are we getting close? When I, when I, when I joined the board, two and a half years ago, I was told, yeah, we were, you know, just a couple of months, you know, a couple of months it'll be done. And I know there's been extra requirement from D E C.
Yeah.
But even with that extra requirement, which was a year ago, why do we pay, uh, you know, this recurring bills and how, when are, when are we getting close to the?
So it's serendipitous that you asked this question, Victor, because Nora forwarded an email about this this morning to me and I responded. So you know, I, I responded that, you know, a lot of our delays are from D E C. And I commented that they're moving at a pace similar to that of the glacier which created the Hudson River. But I, I think right now we're probably going to have the all clear by the end of the year. Uh, we filed our final engineering report last year. The site's been reclassed. The only thing that's left is revising the site management plan. We submitted that in February. We submitted a revised plan based on D E C comments in August. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, it'll be by the end of the year, but, uh, I'll keep my fingers crossed.
We have substantial reimbursement on that project.
Yeah, we just received $390,000 within the last, uh, month, I believe.
Yeah, the last month.
Remediation program. Good. Okay. That's, then that $300,000 is to cover past remediation?
Uh, past remediation and, uh, other engineering costs.
Yeah.
Okay. You, you can reclassify this tomorrow, but we can't pass it like this.
But anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay. May I please have a motion to accept the abstract order of vouchers?
So moved.
Second.
What was it?
Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thank you all. Um, old business, resolution of authorizing IMA for 203 Hummings Road Sanitary Sewer System. Hummings Road. The areas, uh, down there, some of town of America, some of Village of America. I don't think any of them, when you get past Eagle Nose and you're going down Hummings, I don't think any of those houses are in sewer. They're all in septic. Person bought a house at 203 Hummings and they want to hook up, uh, to the sanitary sewer system uh, that, uh, dead ends by Hummings, uh, Middle School. And they're willing to, uh, pay the cost for that themselves. Uh, it'll be a low pressure system. So it's actually easier in the pipes. Uh, this is a proposed agreement between the Village of America and the Town of America because the pipe will kind of go between the village and the, the town on different, uh, locations. Uh, the majority, I think, is in the village, but there's a lot in the town. And this, uh, resolution, uh, talks about who will pay for what. So if something happens, you know, the village has to fix a pipe in the town, we will charge them $75 a foot and vice versa. So that is what has changed on this and, uh, so that's where we are. Anybody on the board have anything to say?
Yeah, there, it's actually not where we are. The original concept was, uh, incorrect, uh, Mr. Mayor, that it goes from 203 to Eagle Nose Road. That's, uh, then the agreement was changed to include 203, uh, uh, Hummings Road to 220 Hummings Road, which is all the way to the end. And so the village would be obligated to fix that part of the line if, um, the town into it and then seek reimbursement from the town. It gets more complicated. Uh, and then there is the issue that if, you know, was suggested at the last board meeting that we include all the potential extensions, not only to the end of, uh, Hummings Road, but if there was other houses, um, uh, which would be Oak Lane, uh, that they all could hook up at, uh, and, uh, you know, at a future point in time, the agreement after we made, after we sent this back last time, the change was to make it easy, was to clean up who pays for what. Uh, by setting, you know, with, with a, um, cost of $75 a lineal foot, either the town or the village with reimbursement from the other. What they did do is they cut out, uh, additions in the village and left all the additions in the town. So we're obligated to do that as well. Uh, you know, I talked with Jerry earlier today or this afternoon, um, you know, and we should either go I, my feeling is we should go back to the original agreement, which is 203 Hummings Road to Eagle Neck Road, uh, with the mutual, uh, the mutual, uh, reimbursement clause for work done by, if, if necessary by either party. And, you know, it's cleaner, simpler, whatever. Otherwise, we should go back to what the draft was that we sent back to them, which included all the areas, you know, that could potentially hook up. Well, so the, the alt, the, for what's before us tonight, I'm suggesting we have two alternatives. Either we say we don't approve anything tonight. And, um, it would, until a new draft is recirculated, give the approval to a simple resolution, giving the village manager authority to enter an IMA with very specific conditions and we will, I'm happy to enumerate those conditions, which is we basically did last time, uh, but by, uh, to $75 a lineal foot.
Is there anything in this resolution that precludes Oak Lane from being added later?
Tom, it's very hard to hear you.
Okay, Bob Spolzino?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there anything in this resolution that precludes Oak Lane from being added later?
In the, in the resolution or in the agreement?
In the agreement.
Well, the town attorney has indicated he doesn't want to see Oak Lane in the, uh, agreement. I'm not sure why.
I
If we're hooking up, he could not stop us from hooking up our homes to a pipe that's in the village.
Correct. Tom, that's not the issue.
That's the issue I'm talking about, Dan. Thank you.
No, that, excuse me, it's the
From saying, I, I'm asking the village attorney a question. Thank you. So he, in, in the future, if the homes on Oak Lane wanted to hook up, they could hook up? Bob?
Correct.
So
Agreement, this agreement does not deal with who can hook up. It deals with who pays for what.
Right. So that wouldn't change. So if, if, if a pipe on Oak Lane broke after they hooked up, we would still be unhooked.
Right, which is why I don't understand what his objection is. My objection is very simple. Not yours. Town attorneys. It, his email said he, the town didn't want to be responsible for potentially having to do work on Oak Lane if the village didn't do it and then build, then build a village. But on the same token, he's, uh, the town, the village, I'm sorry, the town attorney is asking the village to, uh, be responsible for all of Hummings Road past 203 to 220 uh, and pay, and pay for it and then seek reimbursement. It just seems to me to be not a two-way street and more complicated.
I, I just, I don't understand why we would have to work on 203 to 220. I mean, it's upstream of anything in the village. I just don't, I don't see a scenario where a pipe breaking at 215, we would have to work on.
That's what the agreement says. If they don't fix it, we have to.
I, I, I also am confused because it looks like there's a lot of disturbance on Oak Lane to install this actual pipe. And maybe I'm wrong, but so I, I mean, I mean, I, this is, it just seems like it should be.
Originally, when I looked at the plan, I thought the, the pipe dead ended right, uh, right past where Oak starts and Hummings ends, like right past.
That's not what it looks like now. And that for, you know, that's not, I mean, and maybe it's some other kind of construction, maybe something else is going on, but it's, 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 it, I'm also because we don't have, we don't know what the town actually approved because we have the town minutes from September 23rd, not from last week when they approved something. And they had approved something that was not consistent with the changes we tried to make a month ago. Seems like this is a giant game of telephone.
So here, here That's a fair characterization. I think that's a fair characterization. And, and I would agree. Just, just so you know, Nora, the disturbance in Oak Lane was from the water company when the water pipe broke and they had to put an entire new water pipe.
Right now? That's still visible now, though? That was last year.
No, what's, what's there now is 203 work that goes up towards, it goes up a few feet into a
Oak Lane. Okay, yeah. I mean, that's what I thought.
To where his driveway is.
That's, that's, that's the
Okay.
Sanitary sewer. I just said that if you looked at the plans of, uh, that we all looked at and best, you know, that terminates.
But my suggestion again is, you know, it should be cleaned up easily. Uh, you know, staying from 203 to Eagle Neck Road, which was put, the original concept was and the original deal was. You know, the simplification of the $75 per lineal foot. It also simplifies it, makes it easier. The rest of it, I would, you know, I think we should just do away with, period.
Mike?
Go ahead, Vic.
My, my, you know, trying to, of course, follow this, uh, since last time and I, we don't have a clean copy of what we would should be doing today. We don't know exactly what the town approved. The letter from the town's attorney was Tuesday, but you had a meeting, uh, I think the town attorneys, the managers, the mayor on Friday. I thought it had been resolved on Friday. So that's what confuses me. I thought maybe the meeting on So that's what confuses me. I thought maybe the meeting on Friday was to resolve all this.
That's what we thought.
Sorry?
Okay. We thought the same thing. We thought it was resolved on Friday with the addition of the seventy-five dollars. And then the remove the Oak Lane came out after that.
Okay, so all right. So after, so these two pages that are, probably have different colors, but it's not the full, the full IMA, but just a couple pages that came in after?
Yep.
That's the one that's blue. The markups are in blue in that one.
So we don't, do we have a clean copy? Could we make a clean copy? Or do you need to negotiate this first to get that clean copy?
We need to try to get on the same page.
I mean, there was a phone call, I don't know, October second, with both the, both Bob and Jerry and the village, the town manager and the town attorney and Tom were all on this call. So what was the end, what was the result of that call?
We were gonna seventy-five dollars per lineal foot.
And what they said was, please poll your board individually to see if they agree. And majority of you agreed. And we moved on. And then we had that move Oak Lane memo email from Bill Maker after that.
So I think, if I, if I can summarize, I think this board just wants there to be good for the goose, good for the gander parity in this agreement. And this removal of Oak Lane shifted the balance so that it's not equal anymore. So I think we need to go back and try to just get balance back in some way before this board will sign off.
Maybe just, that's the, you know, just go back and say, we're fine with this if you put Oak Lane back in.
Yeah, I think you're right, Kelly. I think that's the easiest way of doing it.
If I, if I might, I'd give them an option, either put Oak Lane back in or take the, the extension of Hummicks Road out. Either one makes it equal.
Yeah.
But you have an opportunity.
But I, the one, I was looking at the GIS today, though, and I think that the house to the large front side or the town side of two oh three, which is the house that started this all, is two oh five, is partly in the village. So there would be some transverse of village property to get it all the way down to the other end of Hummicks Road. Both the GIS and our zoning map indicate part of that, part of the house on the Larchmont side of two oh three, which is two oh five, is in the village. So I just think we should, it should just be the whole, you know, anybody who could possibly hook up to this sewer should be part of this intramunicipal agreement.
Yeah, it moves us all to have as many people as possible on it.
Yeah. And it wasn't, I mean, you know, this, this guy, this Mr., the two oh three, the people at two oh three, you know, I'm not, I don't think it was their desire. They were told they had to do this by the village engineer. So the more people we can get to hook up, the better it is.
No, they were told, they wanted to build a sewer. They were told if they built the sewer, they weren't, they were not told they had to build a sewer. They were told that if they wanted to build a sewer, it had to be to public specs.
Oh, okay.
That was her nanny. You can thank her nanny for that.
Well, that would make sense because why would you let somebody hook up if they weren't building to public specs?
And it's a low pressure line. Which means a lot of people are gonna have grinders grinding stuff up before it goes in there.
My question is, is Jerry, is this something that you can, you can handle? Or is this something Bob should handle? Or both of you should handle? Or how do we get this telephone game back on to the right connection?
So I'm sure, I know Mr. Maker and Mr. Altieri are on the same page. I understand that the way you presented your proposal, either we leave Oak Lane in or we remove two oh three, two twenty to two oh three, or we take that out, that might be the solution. I could do that. But at the end of the day, Mr. Spolzino has to bless the IMA because it has to be, you know, can't be manager language. It has to be lawyer language. And you know, I speak a different language than Bob does.
Well, I can talk to Bill Maker on Friday. That's the day he's available for town work. And see if we can get this resolved.
It will. My suggestion is, if I might, in order to speed things up, is for you and Maker and Altieri and Jerry, all to get, be on it and get this finished one way or the other.
We'll try.
I thought, I thought that's what you guys tried to do last.
Yeah. That's what we tried to do.
Okay.
And just to clear for the record, I think everybody on this board, but particularly me, it's very much in favor of the IMA and getting, you know, sewers in and people of Septic, you know, where they're, where they're next, you know, the waters.
Sewers are gonna be in one way or the other. Since now it's how we've been came.
Yes.
Right.
So we're gonna leave that, leave that on old business until two weeks from now. Resolutions authorizing bond resolution for closed capital projects, A, B, C, and D. Before I go through them, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, thanks to Algi for sending all
My pleasure.
I second that and to his, and to his staff, Laura, that, and that summary sheet explains it all very nice. So thank you very much. That explains, you know, it's a big, big bond. So, so we have everything in an order. Thank you.
Okay, the first is bond A, resolution. Date is gonna be now October thirteenth, twenty twenty, authorizing issuance of two hundred and one thousand, one hundred aggregate principal amount of serial bonds of the village of Mamarone County of Westchester, state of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of a billion improvements in and for the village. Anybody have any questions or concerns about A? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Trustees.
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Bond resolution dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to three million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred aggregate principal amount of serial bonds of the village of Mamarone County of Westchester, state of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the construction of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction of improvements to village streets and roads, the acquisitions of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of park improvements, all in the village of Mamarone. And this, I'm assuming it's the street paving that happened last year. Is that right?
That's correct, Mayor.
That's correct. Does anybody want to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Bond resolution dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to eight hundred and forty-seven thousand aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the village of Mamarone County, Westchester, state of New York pursuant to a local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of a firefighting vehicle for the village of Mamarone. And this is for the engine that we just bought. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So move.
Second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I hope the fire department uses it in good health. And yes. Resolution dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to ninety-two thousand, four hundred aggregate principal amount of serial bonds in the village of Mamarone County of Westchester, state of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction of power infrastructure improvements in and for the village of Mamarone. This is when the line went in Harbrow and Park, is that correct?
That is correctly, Transformer.
Yep, transformable in Harbrow and Park, the whole line on the field.
That's correct, Mayor.
Three for three, we're letters in scoring position, Algi. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All roll.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. All righty. Resolution authorizing three C. This is one of the Arts Council. We're gonna appoint two folks to the Arts Council tonight. And we're gonna appoint one gentleman to the flood. The folks going on the Arts Council is Ms. Elizabeth O'Rourke and Ms. Carrie Vaccaro Melkin. And they will be serving expired terms. Is that right? Is they both serve the same terms or?
I'm not sure.
They're both expiring December twenty twenty. And, you know, I'm pretty sure
I would trust Sally.
Okay, so I guess we can do this all in one fell swoop.
I'm happy to make that motion.
I will second that motion. Any comments? No?
Trustees, Winship?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I want to thank the, both of those ladies for volunteering their time. The Arts Council is a very important group in our village. They really want to improve the quality of life in our community. The next appointment is to the Flood Committee, and it's Mr. Steve Glennar. Do we have a term? Does the Flood Committee have terms?
Um, the Flood Committee does have terms, but this is a vacancy that is just an unfilled vacancy. It's us filling our seventh spot. So.
So we will let him know by way of his appointment letter when the term expires.
Great, thank you.
At that time. Sally heard that, I'm sure. I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Glennar to the open position on the Flood Committee.
I will second that and thank him for his interest.
Who is him?
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? Victor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, thank you all. New business, res- resolution adopting traffic commission recommendations. And the first one is for a handicap spot on Center Avenue. And this is from, pardon, from a point a hundred feet west of the intersection of Fenimore Road to a point twenty feet west thereof. Outside of Center Avenue. And so this is a resident asked for a handicap spot in, in an area with not a lot of residents. I just want to point out that a handicap spot does not belong to a particular resident. Any handicap person with a proper handicap sticker is able to avail themselves of it. But hopefully, this will be advantageous to the person who needs it. Any questions or concerns?
So move.
Dan moved?
Second.
Charlie second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, the next is lowering the village's speed limit on Fenimore Road. When we originally lowered a lot of the speed limits in the community to twenty-five miles an hour from thirty miles an hour, we thought that Fenimore Road all the way down to Boston Post Road was a county road. But it turns out it's not. It's a village of Mamarone Road. So this is part of trying to get people to drive slower in our community and to have safer streets for pedestrians and bikers and also for drivers. And what this resolution would do is lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Fenimore Road, its entire length in the village of Mamarone. And that ends a little bit after I ninety-five, if you hadn't know. There is a resident who wants to talk about this. Could you get Mr. Tippett on?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Glenn.
Yes, you've basically lowered the speed limits throughout the village. And that's fine. But you have done absolutely nothing to see how it affects the village. I have asked you numerous times to have the police department give you a detailed report. Does anybody get a ticket for forty miles an hour on Halsted Avenue? Does anybody in the entire village get a ticket for texting? Or is there a reduction in accidents? What are the cause of accidents? If you're gonna take the safety of the roads, you know, honestly, if you're gonna actually take the safety of the roads to heart, you have to have the information to tell you if what you're doing is actually working. I have not heard one word about the differences between accidents since we moved to twenty-five miles an hour. I haven't heard one, one, one report about tickets, nothing. What's the point in putting in all these safety regulations if you, as a board, don't get any feedback to tell you if any of the safety regulations are working or what else you could further do and what areas you have to work on as a board to make the village safer? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Fenimore Road.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you all. Thank you to the Traffic Commission for the usual good job and hard work. Okay, the next is a resolution authorizing execution of contract renewal for grant writing services. This is our grant writing folks, the Millennium Group, Millennium Strategy. They charge us three thousand a month for grant writing purposes. It says, whereas over several years Millennium has assisted the village in applying for grants in, it should be two hundred thousand dollars for this, what, grants in approaching two million, twenty million, is that right?
Yeah.
Flying.
They've gotten us about two hundred thousand dollars so far in the past year. We talked about this in the work session. Any questions or concerns?
Victor, do you want to do this for six months or are you comfortable for the year?
I, I would rather do it myself for the year instead of just, you know, stringing people along again.
I agree. I think the, I think the year, I mean, I, we had a discussion about that. I, my understanding from the discussion was that the concerns were raised, but we're fine with the year.
And I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
No.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, Jerry?
Yep.
The swings in Harbrow and Park. Are gonna call this an extra six thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's Columbus Park, just to correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, in Columbus Park. Just so folks notice, if you go down to Columbus Park, which is, for those who don't know, it's the park behind the train station in Washingtonville. It has basketball courts. It has play equipment for very small children, play equipment for larger children. But what it doesn't have is, it doesn't have But what it doesn't have is, it doesn't have a swing set. And it is the only neighborhood park that doesn't have a swing set. All of us who remember being young, who have recently had young children, kids really like swings. So. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars in a fund that developers paid into for recreation fees. And we are going to spend. $39,379.04 to put swings in that park that's long been neglected. This is a resolution to approve the extra $6,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. So it started, Mayor, if I could, at $6,000. And then we decided to do some of the work in-house. In addition to that, we moved to existing benches in-house, and we were able to negotiate the price down to $6,000 for installation of a shade structure over the swing set, which was an oversight in the original. In the original proposal. We didn't want to lose the structure or the shade structure because it was very important to the overall completion of the, of the play area. So decided to put our together and go from $16,000 to $6,000, and that's what we're asking the board to approve.
I do have, I do have a question. This is not being charged. To directly to the, you know, to the reserve fund as opposed to, I mean, the recreation fund as opposed to charging the recreation fund, putting in the general. And charging that.
We're taking money out of the recreation, that's the recreation budget. This is the recreation fund that is paid for by developers that we've never actually done anything with. We have $400,000, so it won't come out of general funds, it won't come out of reserve funds. It will come out of this.
Trust fund.
Funded recreation fee, and this is what, this is what it was supposed to be used for.
That's not, that wasn't my question.
Sounded like it.
The question is, we're, we're charging the recreation fund and transferring it to the village fund, if I'm reading the resolution correctly. To just charge, paying the bill directly for the recreation fund. But why are we not doing that?
I don't think there's a capacity that all bills have to go through the general one.
That's my question. I don't, I don't, I can't understand why that would be.
Oh, you please answer that.
It's a capital project and should be paid out of the capital fund. Funds are being transferred over into capital. And the trust fund to the capital fund.
Okay. That being asked and answered. Anybody have any other issues?
I think, I'm glad we're doing this. I really am. This had originally, I believe, come to the board's attention through an effort by the Lions Club, who was interested in doing something for the park. And I just don't want them to feel that. I thank them for bringing this to our attention. I think it was urgent enough that we, I don't want them to think we were stealing it from them, and I encourage them to please consider other projects in the village. We need them everywhere.
Thank you.
Actually, if I may, well, of course, I support everything Kelly said, and I know they, there's a lot of good volunteers there, so nothing to do with the Lions, actually. Amazing work, but actually, this all started with the dogs. We talked about dogs in Columbus, and somebody was listening, and somebody said, don't even talk, we need swings. And I'm glad this moved quickly. Jerry, well, Jerry actually. Well, it was Jason moved quickly. Money was there, and this is the community. I was at a call, just one call. The committee immediately agreed on what to do. Jason moved. This is a good, good example, and I think also along the same lines as what Kelly's saying, that I know the recreation department is just looking at all the neighborhoods and see what we can do all around the parks, and in this time of constraints, at least go to that fund, as the mayor's pointing out, is, is, is pretty significant now, and we can do some, some, some improvements, some, some things that people are really enjoying now that, you know, people are more local, working from home, but do need to get out and, and, and stretch. So, so our parks are, are going to be, you know, more and more desirable and so, so anything. Let, then let's, let's take, this is the first move, so I applaud this. Thank you.
All right. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Yes. Communication to the board round two.
Before you go to communication, Mr. Mayor, I have additions to. On the new business. I'd like to make a motion for D to add the request for expressions of interest for Land Use Council.
Yes. I'll support that. We agreed, we talked about it.
Are you seconding the motion?
Victor, are you seconding the motion?
I'm seconding the motion. We discussed it in work session.
Augustino, call the rule.
Trustees Winship?
No.
Trustees Natchez?
Yes.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Trustees the four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
A motion for E. To. Pass a. Or to do an RFP as set forth in the information in the work session with an updated data as of today.
Is this a motion to amend the agenda?
We just did the agenda.
I thought that was just for Land Use Council that the amendment was made.
This is for the Land Use Council.
Got it. And.
If you have made the motion.
I've made the motion. You need a second.
And then.
Second.
Okay, first of all, there's people with their hands up, and I just want to say I'm wholeheartedly against this. I think the. The. RFP itself is very inawfully crafted. That we haven't really, you know, polled the workers, the people who deal with the village attorney on a day-to-day basis to see how it's actually operating now. I, I, I think that we have a ton of turnover in the Village of Amerik, and I think that turnover is difficult to manage, and it would be nice to have continuity in some department. I think we've been well-served by the village attorney. I think that it's a shame. I really do. But that being said, that's what my two cents. There's a resident that has his hand up. Mr. Tigger again.
I just want to note that the. The, the resolution is, as, as was put on the, on the work session, has a date of January. 2017.
Yeah, I, I ask for it to be updated through today. Today's date.
It also has a deadline here at the end. Mr. Natchez, since you prepare this. Yes, October 30th. That has to be.
November 30th.
That's too late.
Take a day.
So is this motion withdrawn so that we can, so that you can change this?
Discussion on the motion, Kelly. What, what date, Victor, do you think would be, or do you think?
Let's modify the motion to be to, I guess, tomorrow's date and do November the 15th. I mean, I think November 30th is a little late.
Sure.
Okay. That, that, those amendments are acceptable to the maker of the motion.
But do you want to reconsider? You initially said November 30th. You said too late, but it's, it's, you know, this takes. Have to do it properly. So it takes a.
Well, I called on Mr. Tigger, and I'm sure he'll help you out. So, Mr. Tigger?
I'm sorry. Actually, I actually put my hand down. I raised my hand because you were moving to communications to the board. But as long as I'm here, I would agree that November 30th is probably a better date, six weeks to return. A good amount of bids.
Okay, thank you. Motion's made. It's been, I guess, amended. There's two people who want to speak on it. Let's go to Andrew Spass, and then we'll go to Glenn. Spass?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know if you can hear me. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board again. Is this the public comment section, or am I jumping?
This, this is on for, we haven't gotten the public comment text.
I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I'd heard. I apologize. I will.
Not a problem.
And come right back to you guys. Thank you.
Let's try, let's try Glenn.
Is, is this on the resolution to put a bid out for attorneys?
Yes.
What exactly are you putting the bid out? Because listening to your work session, I don't think you have decided yet whether you want an attorney to represent all three boards or just the planning board. What exactly are you putting the bid out for?
All three, all three boards, Glenn.
Land use boards.
But you're, you're.
Actually, all, all four boards.
And is there any other village that does that?
There are other communities that do that.
All three boards?
Four.
Okay, well, I, I'm just going to give you the warning, and I'll tell Bob, you know, Bob, add 20,000 to your fee when they get, when they get the bids back. I think you're playing with fire. I think it's poorly thought out, and it's going to come and burn you. Goodbye.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay.
Clarify the dates so that we can move forward. Help yourselves. Mr. Natchez, can you clarify what, what date are you?
October 14th should be the date of the, which is tomorrow's date, which was what we requested, and. Let's, November 20th.
November 20th?
Yeah.
Okay. So you want to put out the RFP that's in the packet with the change dates and you're not changing anything else? Okay. Nothing else? No comments? Augustino, call the rule.
Trustees Winship?
No.
Trustees Natchez?
Yes.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Trustees the four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Absolutely not. Worst idea ever going on. Okay.
I'd like to make another motion. To add a for F, which is the RFP for expressions of interest as a village attorney.
Second.
I'd like to have the changes, the date, it did not have a date at the beginning of our 14th and the return date of November 20th.
This is to. Hire a village attorney for the village, not a land use attorney.
That is correct, sir.
There was no second on the motion to amend?
I second the motion to amend.
Well, it's acceptable to the, okay, if the changes are acceptable to the second or it's acceptable to the maker, so it's already incorporated.
This is the motion to add. It's not the motion to change, it's the motion to add.
Yes.
I seconded the motion to add.
You were also changing dates on it. You don't change the motion add.
Yes.
Do that all over again.
If you wish.
No, you have to. It's not even if I wish. Oh, we call the rule on this miss.
Trustee Winship?
No, no.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee the four?
And you?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hard no.
Then I'd like to make a motion for G to have the RFP dated October 14th with a return date of November 20th, as in the package from the work session.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to make comments. We have, right now, a person who's in the village on a full-time basis. Working day-to-day with department heads, employees, and that was, you know, an agreement worked out in this deal that we had with the village attorney. We're going to now go to a position where everybody's saying they want a full-time village attorney, works for the village. We're going to have a village attorney that's not full-time, and that doesn't work for the village. So this is change for change's sake. With the money you're offering, good luck at what you're going to get.
I would be happy to go to the amendment to be a full-time village attorney, but the last time we did that, there wasn't insufficient support for it.
Okay.
I don't think staff are going to be served well by this, and I don't think the Board of Trustees will be served well by this. I don't think the residents will be served well by this.
I don't think they appreciate the experience and the depth of knowledge that we have here. And, you know, time will tell, and maybe I'm wrong. Augustino. Please call the rule.
Trustees Winship?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee the four?
I can't hear you.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, nine, no. Nay. Okay.
I'd like to make another motion, Mr. Mayor.
What?
Let me make the motion. I'd like to make motion for H to put on the agenda the adoption of the local law to amend chapter of the code of the. Of the mayor and the Board of Trustees regarding the authority to appoint the clerk treasurer. That's within the packet.
You know, can I, can I just point out something?
Yes.
At least you can make an argument.
Say again?
At least you can make an argument about the village attorney, that it's time-sensitive and you need to get it done. There's absolutely no argument to do that here. You know, this is something that, you know, we should, we should do at a regular meeting. It shouldn't be added as a special. It's really absurd.
It's going to be set for a public hearing.
Really absurd, and it's just ramming this down the throat. And it's bad form, and it's bad government. I don't hear a second.
There a second to it?
I think we should, well, it'll be on our next work session agenda. I mean, next, right, I think it'll be on our next regular meeting agenda. And I also realized on October 10th, we had a public hearing on the proposed referendum to to, to give the entire board the authority to remove a land use board member, and it was adjourned, but it got dropped, so we're going to have to renotice that. So that probably should go on at the same time.
Okay. So that didn't get a motion, so here we are. The. Public comment round two.
Wait, Tom? We have one more that we have to do, that we need to, the mural.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, our resolution said it needed to come back to us, so I think we should, just to make sure we're all.
To the board, no objections. It didn't say it had to be a vote. I don't care.
I mean.
I have no problem voting on it.
I think we should. I think, you know, I think this, because I think.
What are we up to here?
4I.
Okay.
Well, no, 4H, 4I. Yeah, 4I, 4I.
4I.
4I sent pass.
4I, I'm making a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Augustino?
Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
He said yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay. Tonight at the work session, a preliminary sketch was made and presented to the Board of Trustees that showed a Black Lives Matter mural painted, beginning on Mamaroneck Avenue, but not on Mamaroneck Avenue, at the border of American Van Rans, going toward Van Rans. Probably, I would bet about 50 yards. And it was very tasteful and very well-done, and it'll be hopefully done on October 24th. I make a motion that the board I don't know why I'm making a motion to the board, that the board accepts that location.
And the, and the image, and the image.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An email, email from the mayor to the mayor, to the, to the board October 13th at 4:18 PM. So that's, that's where we got the image.
Yeah, you did.
That's one of the. And there's two images there, so we should clarify, is the image?
I clarified that it was, it was the one that starts on, it's the one on the right that starts on the closest to the railroad station on Van Rans, on the corner of Van Rans and Mamaroneck Avenue, and goes travels on Van Rans.
So, so as depicted in the mayor's email.
Yeah.
October 13th at 4:18 PM, so that.
Today, yes, yes, thank you. Norrie, wanna second it?
Yeah, I wanna second it, and I just would also, I don't know if we have the image, but it's, it's the words Black Lives Matter, and then there's bracketed by two Sankofa birds, which is like a traditional African symbol of sort of hope and peace and love.
Norrie's second.
Directing to the past to building to the future. So it's sort of like, it's the words with these two, you know, very appropriate images. So I second.
We're seeing a call roll.
Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, it is public comment round two. I'm gonna go with Rich Limegruber, the head of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much, everybody. This is a late evening for all of you, so thank you for being here. I am commenting tonight on the, I guess, the conversation around the restaurants who have been granted the on-street dining. I have four pieces of feedback from Chamber of Commerce members. Can I, can I read these out for these members and do this on, on tonight, or do I need to do it another time?
Well, no, Rich, if you just send them to us, I mean, I, I think that we're all gonna be on the same page here.
Okay.
I'm gonna read one and two that are representative.
Okay, I, I think, you know, obviously there was discussion about you guys deciding whether or not you wanted to keep the barriers up into November and December. And so the feedback that I've been given from the members obviously has to do with, number one, thanking all of you for giving them the opportunity to stay in business, and as you might be able to tell from walking down the avenue, everybody is doing very well. And we'd just like to say thank you for, for everything that you guys have done, including the village and, and the, you know, the department who put up all those all the, you know, the different barriers. So, okay, so I will forward these over to the village and board, but I just, I think we, we need to have a discussion before the decisions need to pull the barriers down, and I look forward to having that discussion with you guys, okay?
Thank you, Rich.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Hi, Rich. Thank you.
Mr. Spass?
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the board. I like to end meetings on a positive note, and I definitely will get there, but during the course of listening to tonight's meeting, two things came to mind. The first thing I want to address is I'm disheartened to hear that we're losing our village attorney. Mr. Spalzino, Judge Spalzino, who did sit on the appellate division, is incredibly seasoned. I've seen him in numerous different capacities and his staff, working late into the night with various land use boards and commissions and committees, working tirelessly and advocating on behalf of each and every resident that you represent and have been elected by in this community. I, I'm, the revolving door in our community has to stop. The consistency, the knowledge and familiarity has tremendous benefits, and I am so sorry to see these dedicated individuals who have tirelessly advocated on our behalf, leaving. And I'm sorry that I couldn't participate in more dialogue during the course of your meeting about that very issue, not only as an officer of court, as an attorney, but as a resident and, and member of this community. Next topic, I'll just allude to, the courts are a pillar of our village. I'll have to explore more as to what is being discussed. I certainly support Judge Derico and Judge Gallagher. They are outstanding justices of our, in the judicial system, very well-respected by their colleagues in the, on the bench. As someone who practices law, I'm in that court every single week. I see the hard work that the staff put forth, the judges put forth, the village prosecutor. It's a collective effort, and I will tell you this, with the right management of the calendar, not only can it dispense justice, but it also, in terms of revenue, in a non-intrusive manner, could also assist us during these very challenging times economically. I've emailed our village manager and village prosecutor with regards to concepts which other municipalities and our county utilize, or actually, I should say, our state. And I believe with the presence of our justice in the court, again, it can effectuate and provide and dispense justice and also serve as a means for us to gain economically. But that's for a different day. I want to end on a positive note. As a coach for Little League, I'm sorry, for the soccer league and baseball, I'm hoping that not only members that are usually sitting on the dais, I'm hoping that the members that are listening at home are able to enjoy what's happening in our village right now. Go to Harbor Island, you see kids being kids again, families being families again, coming outside and enjoying the community that we live in. The fields look amazing, the soccer fields, the baseball fields, the parks look great. People are out there with their dogs. I'm thrilled to hear about the resolution y'all passed earlier. We are so fortunate to be able to call Mamaroneck home, and we have to think positively. There's so much negativity, we've got to focus on how fortunate that we are, and I, I thank you, being the members on the board who are effectuating that and making it possible, because you go outside on a weekend, or even during a weekday now, and you do see people utilizing the infrastructure that's being maintained by all our employees and individuals working on behalf of our, our village. So I just hope that everybody has a chance to go outside and take a look at the good things, the really good things happening, not just in the Sound Shore, but in particular here in our village. So I just, we have to end on, on a good note. And that's something to take a lot of pride, pride in Mayor and members of the board, and Jerry and Dan Zornoff, you guys. It's definitely, I'm hoping you're able to embrace that and, and see the final product.
Thank you, Mr. Spass.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia again.
I want.
Yes.
Yes, I want to thank you for your time. I write, today I heard the whole five hours of your agenda. And I just, I'd like to express that, you know, I know you guys, we all, we are all carrying a very difficult task during this time. But I would like to know about the outside dining. I am a restaurant owner, and I would like to know if it's all possible, just like Governor Cuomo had mentioned to the city, that they may have the outside barriers through next winter. I have supplied information on how I plan to keep the customers not only safe, but warm during the, the winter. It would be greenhouses that are easily well-kept clean, but also safe. And I would like to express my sentiments that we would love the way, the way, have the village continue supporting us because my well-being rise on your decision. If I am forced to lift up the barriers, I'm afraid I am forced to close. So I would like to know if in the, in the next meeting, or what, what are my expectations from the village of Mamaroneck?
I, I don't, we don't have an answer for you tonight, Mr. Garcia, that, that question that the village manager is gonna be working on. But we understand your concern, and I have been heartened to see the restaurants seem to be having revival.
Yes, because, because of the barriers. I have to say, that's been a wonderful feedback, not only from, you know, economically, but also from the residents and outside residents. They're very excited and they love what they see, what, what we all have done collectively.
Right, okay. Then, then, we'll be in touch, Mr. Garcia, I promise you.
Thank you so much. Would this be because, and I'm sorry, I wrote the whole agenda with you guys, because I was told by Ms. Wong, Courtney Wong, that this was gonna be part of the agenda, and I didn't hear anything.
It wasn't on the agenda, but, yeah. You can check the agenda online in the future, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Sorry for the miscommunication she may have given me, but that's exactly what she gave me, so.
It's all right. No problem, sir. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, let's do Glenn, then Stuart, then Brian from 604 Tompkins. Hi, Glenn. Mr. Tippett? You're on the air.
Hello.
Hi, Glenn.
Just to reiterate, board members, you're gonna have to wake up to the fact that if you're gonna treat your village employees like this, you're not gonna have them. You're starting to cause dissent that's gonna go throughout your organization. And when you have an organization like that, your best people are gonna be looking to go elsewhere because nobody wants to work in a place where, where, where people feel there's an axe hanging over their heads. I think you made a really poor decision, and then I don't know what, what your power grab is with the clerk treasurer. If the mayor's association, New York State says that's the law, really, do you have to have that, that authority? Is that what the villages come to? We have to have five mayors? Because that's what it really seems like. It seems like everybody wants to be the mayor. If you want to be the mayor, run for mayor. So, a couple of other things. I know that we're getting long into the year, and I think Jerry's looking to make a presentation in December to look how we're doing with our finances. That's what I heard mentioned at the at the budget meeting. A couple of things to, to look at. Where are we with the mortgage tax? Where are we with the sales tax? Now that we're talking apples and apples. The price increase started August last year, so August, September, October, you'll be apples to apples with what you're collecting in sales tax. This year over last year, how are we doing with the tennis courts? Parking still looks light around the train station. I saw 120 cars. But at the same time, you also had a re-valve in Rhine Neck, which probably is going to increase the amount of pressure you're bringing in, even if you only raise your property tax 1%. You're looking at, we're looking at 10, 15% raising the property tax just for the fact that the values of properties in Rhine Neck have significantly increased over the last five to 10 years. So that's something maybe you have the budget committee look at, projections of where your property tax is going up. The other thing that you have to be aware of is, not this year, but next year, the year after, is sorceresses coming in on commercial properties. Because if you're not getting the rent that you got before, you have a vacant property, you're gonna start to see the sorceresses start to come in. But, you know, I think that you got really good management, and you just have to be aware and stay on top of your numbers. You got an excellent staff. Don't overburden them. Don't have to, every single meeting, you don't have to pass three laws. And start taking your time with the laws. Allow the public to speak. Again, the dog law today, boom, had to be passed today. Why can't you introduce a law? Let people speak on it, speak on it a second meeting, vote it on the third meeting. Is it so difficult to allow people to absorb, hear exactly what the law is? You would have solved yourself so many problems with the Black Lives Matter. If you had let those proponents come in, make a presentation, that way people knew what the facts were before they started to comment on them. Some people thought the village was doing it. Some people thought that it was gonna be over here. Some people thought you were telling them where they had to put it. If you had let them come in, make a presentation at the board, let everybody absorb it, let everybody comment the next meeting, and the following meeting, voted on it, you wouldn't have to vote it down the first time. You would have had no controversy with it. It would have been, oh, community, oh, this is what they want to do. The last thing is, what is the exact date that they're, they're looking to paint, time and date, that they're looking to paint the mural? And are they still looking to, perhaps to a fundraiser for a scholarship tied to that Black Lives Matter unveiling? Thank you.
They're, they're doing it on the 24th, and you can go down and ask them about the scholarship. Thank you, Glenn. Next up, Brian, 604 Tompkins.
Hey, thank you very much. I, I've had the pleasure of listening to every minute of tonight's meeting, and one of the things that kind of alarmed me a little bit was. I'm sorry, say again.
What's your name, sir?
Brian Williams from 604 Tompkins Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I had the pleasure of listening to all of tonight's meeting, and I was a little alarmed to hear you start to talk about metered parking on Boston Post Road, especially in the area between Sedona Tap House and 422 Boston Post Road. You know, this, this building right here at 604 Tompkins Avenue does not have a parking lot, and the parking for this building takes up that 200 feet of, of curbside from the corner of our property to the no parking sign at East Boston Post Road and North Berry Avenue. And it also continues from Beach Avenue down towards, down towards 422 Boston Post Road. If you, if you make that all metered parking, you're gonna force all of those cars into the residential neighborhood. And just to give you some, some perspective, this evening, I'm, I'm parked. And just to give you some, some perspective, this evening, I'm, I'm parked almost all the way down on, on Brook Street, down Beach Avenue. Yeah. Olive Walnut Avenue, parking is taken, there's no parking on Pine Street. So you're gonna be forcing people to park on Melbourne Avenue, you're gonna be forcing people to park on Brook Street. You're gonna force parking from this building way far into this neighborhood. So I think you need to really seriously consider the unintended consequences of, of a proposal like that. Especially since a very, a very large portion of this, of this property is still working from home, including myself.
Thank you, Brian.
Stuart, unmute yourself.
Hi. I'd like to finish up. But first, respectfully mayor, respectfully mayor, it was disappointing that you took the opportunity of the pandemic to restrict public comment on agenda items. It, but it's still, this is still a public meeting, even though you're sitting there in the office and other folks are sitting at home. And all the constitutional issues around a public meeting come down on this space. So I would hope going forward, you would, if you're gonna cut me off at five minutes, you cut everybody off at five minutes. You don't pick and choose who you want to hear from. So I was on 207 Grand. 207 Grand subdivision has been an eight-year grift, almost successfully completed this past March with the issuance of a building permit. As I have documented to the board, the ex-village planner and current village attorney worked with the developer to circumvent the required planning review, planning board review of this subdivision. They ignored the fact that the subdivision as filed is not zoning compliant. They ignored the fact that ZBA was told by the applicant's attorney that the plan would need to go back to the planning board. They ignored the fact that ZBA members believed that they would be able to make recommendations to the planning board about their areas of concern. The ZBA went so far as to include in their motion to grant the variances that, quote, "the planning board has to approve." Because of the immense amount of problems with plans, after excavation and setting up the foundation forms, work has ceased for the last two months. But for some reason, developers have not been returned to the planning board for required review and approval of new subdivision. This is by, the spree that I've mentioned are by no means a complete list of the current projects, where the building department has ignored requirements of village code to enable developers to increase their profit to the detriment of residents. Village manager should well know the historic problem with the building department. At the first Board of Trustees meeting he attended, he was given a blow-by-blow of five other projects similarly gained for developers' benefit. Residents deserve a building department that protects the environment, their property and quality of life. Residents deserve staff that respect the responsibilities and authority of our volunteer board. At the end of the day, the buck stops with the Board of Trustees. The village manager cannot stand up a building department that will protect residents' interests by controlling rapacious developers. I believe the board needs to become actively involved in resolving this problem. Thank you, I hope you get home soon. Good night.
Okay. Let's see what else we have. The clerk treasurer, nothing. The village attorney, not much. Or village attorney. Minutes boards, commissions and committees. Minutes of Board of Trustees, work session, a regular session of September 29th, and a special meeting of September 21st, 2020. Minutes of Board of Traffic Commissioners, meeting of September 8th, 2020. Minutes of the Arts Council Meeting of September 6th, 2020. Minutes of the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee of July 28th, 2020. Minutes of the Committee for the Environment of July 21st, 2020. Okay. As was mentioned before, early voting starts next Saturday at the Mamaroneck Town Center. No matter where you live in the Westchester County, you can go to an early voting location and tell them where you live, and they will print out the ballot that is appropriate for your area. So, you know, beat the lines on a, on election day, and I hope everybody gets a chance to get out and vote. I know I'll be voting on Saturday the 24th, just to get it out of the way. The motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.